And you're all set to go now.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so I'm calling select board meeting to order at seven P M on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. This is an entirely Zoom remote meeting. Welcome, everyone. I hope everybody had a nice Valentine's Day. Um, so tonight, to remind the public, we are not taking public comment like we normally do at the first and the last of the meeting. The only public comment we're going to take, since this is a special meeting, is during the meeting for the specific agenda items that we are going to discuss. All right. Okay, so now I'm going to rearrange this. The setup point of this meeting tonight is discuss to discuss the regional dispatch I M A. That's why we're meeting. We've got a few more things to go through, but we're gonna get through those first and do the regional last. So we've got time and we're not tired by the end of that one to do the other things that are also important. Okay, so we're gonna start off with the review and approval of the building commissioner position. Um, because our current commissioner is going to retire on March third. Mark?
That's correct.
Okay, so Mark and Vanessa have given us a proposed job description. So tonight, we're just approving the job description. We're not going any further. On the twenty-eighth, we will decide whether to hire an outside recruiter to help us. We'll know more at that point as far as whether there are candidates we can find on our own. Okay, so um, tonight, since we're back on Zoom, I'm just gonna go around each time um by who I see. That way I don't miss anyone. So Lisa, so I see Lisa, Andrew, Sam, and Chelsea. That's gonna be my order until we get to the regional and then we'll we'll probably mix it up a little bit there. So Lisa, you want to start out with this one?
Sure. Great, Kathy. Thank you. Um, I had also reached out to the Chair of Planning Board today, and I asked her if she had any feedback for this as well. Obviously, it was in her. It wasn't his chair of planning board. It was in her personal capacity. So she had a couple of comments as well as I, so I'll just go through them. Understatement of duties. Um, on the last line where it says enforcement of local zoning bylaws, Mark, we'd like to add comma decisions of planning board and zoning board of appeals and other applicable regulations. So adding decisions of planning board and Z B A. And that is state law. So I just tell me, let me know when you're good with that one. Yeah. Okay, sorry, sorry. I was looking down. So and under supervision, second paragraph, last line, same things after zoning bylaws, adding decisions of planning board and Z B A, which again is state law.
Okay.
And a question under the the next paragraph, the two administrative employees and three part-time. Who were the two administrative? Is one Laura Davis?
Uh, yes. So that is a shared, that's a shared position with conservation.
So my only concern with that is I know it's a shared position, but Laura reports to Z B A as well, who if somebody appeals a building inspector decision, it goes to the Z B A. So it's kind of an odd. I understand how it works. I don't know how better to word it. Um, there was, I'm just a little confused and concerned that this person's gonna report to Lori and gonna report to the Z B A when there could be a conflict.
So I'll just. I mean, yeah, I'm not sure what to do with, because right now it just says departmental level of supervision. So I'm not.
That's fine. I mean, I'll throw it out there if anybody else has that same concern.
So Lisa, your point is that it's not clear that that Laura specifically also reports to Z B A. Is that your point?
The the point is that it 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 appears almost as a conflict, Kathy. So she reports to Lori, but she also reports to the board that could hear an appeal of a decision or a um, a decision that Lori makes.
But isn't that a fact? That's what she does do?
It is. It is. But I'm just bringing it up that it was it was a concern. That's all. I mean, I don't know how to address it any other way, because that's what she's doing.
Right. So it's it's a fact.
So.
Anybody else have an issue with that?
I think it's okay.
Andrew?
Hi. So what's the the question is whether to keep it the way it is or?
Well, she doesn't know how to change it either, because what she's she's just saying it might be a problem, but the problem is the problem. It's what's they what's stated here is factual.
I I'm fine with the way it is.
Chelsea?
Um, I actually had a different question on that section. I was I was thinking, why are we not naming? Um, actually assigning a number of employees, like I feel like especially on the part-time side, I feel like that could fluctuate through time. So why don't we just say administrative employees and part-time employees? And then I think it eliminates that issue too, Lisa?
Better, yeah.
You could even cut it. I thought the same thing. You know, why be so specific when it could change? Why don't you just say employee provides departmental level supervision is stopped? Well, why do you need to go into this much detail for what we're trying to do here? When we get people in, we can certainly give them, you know, org chart as far as what it looks like now, but I'm not sure that you need this on a job description.
Okay.
It does exist in many of the other job descriptions.
As far as how many people they supervise?
Yeah, you know, it's it's a formatting, you know, issue. It's it's been there before, you know, to your point, it it doesn't need to be there. Um, I just wanted to know that you'll you'll see similar language like that in other job descriptions.
So I I think I I tend to agree, and I'm not sure who to assign the credit to, but I think if you simply eliminate the numbers that it identifies that they're administrative, you know, probably I would say full-time administrative or, uh, well, I can't say that, can you? Um, you know, you simply administer, take out the numbers and and maybe that maybe that helps to simplify the issue.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, perfect. Um, next one is on page two. Second paragraph enforces the precision provisions of state building code. In the second sentence where it says enforces regulations and requirements. Um, I would suggest, and again, this this came from Mimi, enforce enforces the regulation, sorry, and instead of requirement, say conditions of permits. Because it's not just a special permit. There's there's site plan. There's different types of permits. So uh, my, well, our suggestion would be to say enforces the regulations and conditions of permits issued by the planning board.
Everybody okay? All right, keep going.
And just one other one, actually. I just was curious under the the next paragraph. The interacts with this historical commission and its partners. It recognizes the inventory of historic homes. I don't know where this came from. I was a little concerned because the the main interaction with historical is the demolition delay bylaw. And are we gonna now require our building inspector to um ensure compliance of historic preservations and pertinent bylaws and regulations? So it was a little con- sorry, go ahead, Sam.
I think I think the building inspector ought to be more involved in that. I mean, clearly, the building inspector is not managing that process.
Right.
It seems the building inspector has a lot to offer that in turn to that in terms of a variety of regulations. So I'm not sure that that specific language is critical, but I think that connection is an important one.
So are we gonna require the building inspector then to oversee historic preservation? I mean, that's we have a so for instance, we have the preservation restriction on eighty-four Main Street. That falls under the purview of the historical commission. Are we now saying that now falls under the building inspector?
I hope not.
Well, I do, too. That's why I'm I'm asking. So I was kind of confused with this. And um, I wondered if there was just a a more general way to word this into getting without getting specifics.
I thought that one really was the demolition delay bylaw. That's what we're really trying to get to there.
Yeah.
Not anything for that further than that. So I that's how I read it. Um, so.
It's funny. It kind of says it without saying demolition play. To me, it it says it without specifying the the bylaw itself. So maybe it's better. Um, and and I'm probably not the one to wordsmith it um, as to make it a little bit more specific, because I know that that that, you know, the the building commissioner has had um, in the past, you know, significant interactions with historical commission regarding issues with um, with the um, um, compliance with the bylaw.
So, you know, and again, as far as the historic preserve, um, preservation, maybe available as needed. I mean, anything, but I I think this just there's overlap here with what the historical commission does. And um I would just hate for that to be the case. So maybe we interact with the historical commission and its partners as needed for the demolition delay bylaw in um any, I don't know.
And other historic preservation issues.
Yeah, I think, you know, more general, Sam, I think that, yeah, something like that would alleviate some of the question on that. And that was my last one.
Got that one, Mark?
I do. So basically, I think I'm just gonna add on to at at the end of the sentence of, you know, add on as to after as needed uh, for demolition delay bylaw and wow, my handwriting's slipping. It's early.
That was Sam. Then delete that whole second sentence, right?
And historical preservation and historical preservation issues, and then delete the whole second sentence. Okay.
No, that's great. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
All right, Andrew.
I had one nit which is under job environment in the third full paragraph. To instead of make constant contact with the public, I would say maintain constant contact with the public town departments and board boards should be plural. And then one bigger picture thing I wanted to raise is um under recommended minimum qualifications, education and experience. Um, and the first line says bachelor's degree in a technical field with additional coursework in building trades or related fields. And this is an issue I think we've talked about a little bit before. There is a trend nationally towards removing requirements in job descriptions and particularly in government positions that require um, bachelor's degree. So I would just say preferred. I mean, here, I think that the main um, qualification that this person needs is under the special requirements must be certified as a Massachusetts inspector of buildings. So I don't know whether it's a requirement uh, to get that license that you have to have a bachelor's degree, but um, I just think that as a trend, unless it's absolutely necessary that um, we should be um removing uh, language from job descriptions that suggests that a completion of a bachelor's degree is um, absolutely necessary.
So I I I'm sorry.
Instead of recommended. You'd say preferred.
Just prefer.
Unless it's required for the I mean, clearly, we want the person to end up with a building commissioner certificate in the next paragraph, right? If they don't come in with it, we want them to get it. It sounds like that was my question. Is that what we're really saying there?
No, that person, the applicant must be certified as a Massachusetts.
That's that's a state. Yeah, that's a state requirement.
Yeah.
So I I think I don't, I, you know, like I said, I mean, if you want to change the word recommended to preferred, I know that Miss Hale and I had talked about this, but it is recommended. And then the last sentence, which says, or an equivalent combination of education experience, because, you know, at some point, we do understand that the experience piece is going to is going to trump, you know, obviously, the educational piece.
Okay, but we do say recommended already. So what are we changing it to? It says.
You do. So I don't know if it's semantics that we're that we that we tend to like preferred rather than recommended, but.
I don't know that I see much difference, but going back to what you just said, this is important. Read that second bullet point. It says, or it says must be certified as a Massachusetts inspector of building commissioners or present possesses certificate certification as a Massachusetts local inspector. But then such too. So that's what I'm trying to say. Are we saying that they could come in as a local, but they've got to take the test?
That's correct.
All right. So we don't know the answer to Andrew's question, which is whether having their certificate requires a bachelor's, right? We just don't know the answer.
I don't believe that it does. I don't believe there's an educational requirement for that.
I'd guess not, but.
I would, too.
There are to to add on to what Andrew just said, there are a couple of people in Southborough. And one of them was gonna come to one of the select board office hours, but he didn't. I wish he had, who really wants us to get away from what we're talking about, which is requiring bachelor's degrees when his position that the experience really should trumpet. Um, he didn't come. I wish he had. He's a well-spoken person. Um, so it's worth considering that this is kind of a trend that is the experience that really counts more than um, the the B S or B A. Um, so I think we should keep this in mind as we look at people. But um, so Andrew, are you saying change the word recommended to preferred? That's what you want?
Okay, I I don't know if, so I'm looking at the red line version, right?
I'm not. I'm looking at the um one without.
What in the upper left-hand corner, what Bates label number are you looking at?
Oh, twenty-four.
Okay. Bachelor's degree in a technical field with additional coursework in building.
But the title of that is recommended. That's why I'm trying to get to.
Right. If you go to Bates twenty-six, Andrew.
Okay.
It it shows it right before it says the bachelor's degree. It's the subheading or the heading that recommended minimum.
Okay. I don't know. I just think it Claire, it makes it a little clearer to me to just put preferred after bachelor's degree in a technical field with additional coursework in building trades or related field preferred.
Everybody okay with that? Which I think just amplifies getting.
Yeah, it gives us the flexibility either way, frankly, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that it?
That's it for me. Thanks.
All right, I'm saying.
Yep. I've got one thing that I'd propose to add to the essential functions. Uh, after the section that talks about reviews zoning and building requests section. Um, I would say the following supports town permitting boards perends, including planning board, zoning board of appeals, board of health and the conservation commission, close paren to advise as may be requested relative to permitting applications. Um, I I um, when I was on the zoning board, one of the things that I found extraordinarily helpful was at that time, we actually had building inspectors who would be much more active in the permitting process, providing technical support. It saved us a lot of time, and I think we've gotten away from that. And I think that would be an important function to uh expedite the permitting process and help the boards that may not have the technical expertise to uh uh, connect with the building requirements. So I think that's a useful addition.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Mrs. Divers, I assume you'll send me everything after perens.
Okay. To advise as may be requested comma relative to permitting applications, but I'll send it to you.
Yeah, well, and everything inside the perens. Please, I got the I got the first part, so I know where to put it. If you just want to send that to me, I'll make sure I get it incorrectly.
You got the perens, right?
Uh, yeah, I've I've got the perens all set.
Little thing.
Next, Sam.
Thank you.
For me.
All right, Chelsea.
Um, I just had one. Um, I'd like to add to uh, I'm looking at the red line version, but it's um, in the last sentence above recommended minimum qualifications. Um, where it says coordinated with public safety departments on matters of emergency management or situational needs. I think we need to add um, housing issues in there. Um, because this person should um, be available to board of health when we have um, housing issues. That's it.
Everybody okay with that one? All right. Okay, so I got a few, and most of them, I'm just warning, are nitpicks. Um, a couple of something things. Vanessa, a question for you. Did everybody read Beth Meele's column today in my Southworld on this topic? Okay, so she brought up something. She it's it's at the very bottom. Um, so Vanessa. And we've got this in cap letters here. Um, zoning enforcement officer is what is that a description someplace Beth brought up and said she can't find it anyplace? Um, as far as why we call this person, in addition to the commissioner, the zoning enforcement officer, but we've got it capped in here as if it is a position. Now, where did it go?
I thought that was in the town bylaws.
It may be. I'm just asking. She was best that she looked for and couldn't find it.
I think so, too, Sam. I thought it was in there as well.
I believe it is.
Vanessa, can you check and just let let me know?
Sure.
I'm gonna answer her. So she's got that. Okay, so now um going back to, so I'm looking at the clean version, just so you know, I'm not looking at the red line. Okay, so Andrew, I'm going back to when you said, and we we can stick with what you said, or um, the paragraph on page one that starts with make constant contact.
Yes.
I don't like the word constant. I'd rather say frequent. I mean, constant sounds like literally hundred percent of the time. Um I don't want to scare them off. I think that's all they do. So I I don't, I'm not gonna get hung up on this, but I just said the word frequent sounds better than constant.
Yep.
Kathy, can I just jump in real quick on the zoning enforcement? Under code one seventy-four dash twenty-four, it talks about this chapter should be enforced by the building inspector as zoning enforcement officer.
Perfect.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, what's the site again, Lisa?
It's uh, and the town's code one seventy-four dash twenty-four.
Thanks. Okay, so and but your call on this one, um, I'm just suggesting that frequent sounds better than constant.
That sounds good to me.
I like it.
Okay, so second, then go down the next sentence where it starts with building community property owners. And there should be an and there and state federal and local officials, which requires. And then I like the word skill instead of perceptiveness and discretion discretion. So again, I'm telling you, I'm nitpicking. Um, are we okay with that one? Okay, now this is judgment call. Going back up to the understatement of duties is the third paragraph is actually under supervision, second paragraph, second sentence. I just don't like the way this word sounds persuasion. Um, given the nature of the beast of what we're talking about here, I just don't like the word persuasion. Um, I'm not sure. Self, persuasion says judgment and discretion. I I like discretion. I just don't like persuasion.
Yeah, they shouldn't be persuading people.
They should be totally. I want, you know, objective, objective decisions with, you know, no bias. I just don't like persuasion.
So we'll change that to discretion, then, right? Is that what I heard?
I think that sounds much better. Okay, um, this paragraph, if you guys won't leave it, it's fine, but um, I don't like this one either. So same page under job environment. So remember, the caption is job environment. The paragraph that starts with errors in either technical application. I don't know if we're really describing environment. It just sounds sounds almost if it's not threatening, really negative. Um, so that's your environment. Um, you know, watch out, you know, if you make a mistake, you're going to get us in trouble. I just don't, that paragraph didn't sit well with me as far as having this in a um, job description. But if you guys won't leave it, it's fine. I just, it sounded good.
I I'm fine with leaving it in.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah.
You just say, okay, so leave it in. Um, let's see. Go through that one. Okay, this is my, probably my only subtle comment. One thing I want to add to the job description, and I'm looking at um on the clean version, page two, under essential functions. So we start at the top of page two is the first, second, third, fourth paragraph. I think it probably belongs there, if you agree. I want the building inspector to also be responsible for annually reviewing the fees that her department charges for permits, et cetera, and setting them to be, you know, fair market value, but it's part of her budget process. She needs to go through the fees. And when she's talking about her budget, she needs to talk about that, too, as far as what the fee should be. Um, so that we know we are truly not collecting less than we should. I want to be market. It shouldn't be above market, but I just want to know that that's annually reviewed.
Could you just put that in that paragraph?
Chelsea would like that one.
The paragraph that starts with overseas and collection of fees, comma.
Yes, yes. And I said that, and then I said is required to review fees charged on building projects conduct um, annually to ensure that they are market. Make up the word, whatever the word should be there as far as um.
Competitive.
Yep, I like competitive better. Yeah, that are competitive. But I went on annually, not every five years, every ten years annually, so that it really is part of her process when she does her budget to look at that at the same time. He or she. Okay, so we answered that one. Okay, this one's a little silly, too, but I still thought it sounded a little weird. Under physical requirements. The fourth sentence down, we're saying that she's that employee is going to regularly be required to use hands and fingers. Well, fingers are on your hands. I don't think you gotta say in fingers. It just, oh, it said in finger. So I just.
Which thing?
Yeah, well, that's my point, right? You know, you could use one finger.
That's where the that's where the discretion comes in.
Yeah, so I don't think you need and finger there. I think you just stop after hands. Hands to handle. I mean, your fingers are on your hand. If you don't use your hand, you're using your fingers. It really did make me think of using the wrong finger. So okay, so that's all I've got.
In some jobs, you really need that finger.
Well, I don't think we need to point it out in the job description. That it sounds like we're condoning doing that. Okay, so um, I think we're done um, with the proposed changes. So Vanessa, you got what you need to go forward at this point?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
And then the plan is to, on the twenty-eighth, for Vanessa and Mark to report back to us as far as where things stand, whether they're getting any interest on the way they've advertised this. And then for us to make a decision whether to continue that route or to hire um, a recruiter to help us.
It was posted today on at least a half dozen sites.
Okay. So if we do have the twenty-eighth, um do we want to go ahead in the interim ask Mark and Vanessa to at least get a proposed contract from Bernie, so we could actually vote on that on the twenty-eighth, if we chose to go that route? It'd save us another week.
Yep. Mark. See if we get a volume discount.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm happy to get that. Does the board want to? Um, it would be good, I think, if the board would approve the job description as amended.
Okay, and before we get that one question, when is personnel board meeting?
The day before, the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Okay, all right, so that'll be soon. Okay, so um, I'll make a motion to approve the job description for Southborough Building Commissioner. Um, um, as amended based on all the changes we discussed tonight and agreed to.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call, vote. Lisa?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Chelsea?
Hi.
And Cook is I so five zero to approve the amended job description. All right. Okay, um so now we got pilot committee. Uh, before we get started, didn't we already approve me last meeting? Am I wrong? I mean, we do it again tonight, but I thought we did. Um.
I I think we I think we identified you as the person who will do it. I'm not sure that we actually took a vote to approve you, though.
I think we appointed, yeah.
Two two votes won't hurt anyway. Okay, is Patty in the audience?
She is.
Okay, you bring her over. So we're just coming over. We've got three to appoint tonight. Two of the ones that are designated positions and one at large, which is Ms. Fury. And again, while she's getting said, um, so you know me, um, Joe is, it has been on the capital committee since its original inception, so I think we know him pretty well. Um, so I don't see any reason to go any further with those two either, one of them or you don't. Um, and then we'll quickly talk to Patty, because we know her well, too. Patty, are you, has she gone away?
Yeah, she was there for a moment, but disappeared.
There it comes.
She is.
And you are muted, Patty. There she is. Okay, so everyone remembers it was Patty's citizen petition that has um, generated this committee. Um, and she has gracefully and greatly applied to to be honest. So Patty, anything you want to say before we um discuss appointing you?
Um, I think that you probably all have heard me talk way too much about this committee and this project. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, so I'm just going go around as I see people again. Lisa?
Great. Hi, Patty. Thank you for coming tonight. Um, I have no questions for you. Um, I just thank you for stepping forward. I know, you know, you brought this um, and your reasons why. So uh, just thank you very much for stepping up to fill the seat. Um, I think it's pretty important. So thank you.
You're welcome. I agree. It's important. It's been four years in the process, so.
I remember the long game. That was nineteen. That's exactly right. Um, Andrew?
Um I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Sam?
I will say it also. Let's get it done.
Chelsea?
No questions. Um, I think Patty, with all your research that you've done, um, that will be a good start for the committee, and they won't be starting from ground zero. So um, I look forward to um, your committee getting started. Thanks for coming.
Okay, so I will make a motion um, in one fell swoop to appoint Patty, Kathy Cook, and Joe Palmer to the newly formed pilot committee.
Perm ending.
Excuse me?
Perm. Term.
Term ending, um, well, it's a good question. So somebody help me, are these, I don't know the answer to this.
Would that be June thirtieth, twenty-three, Mark? You're muted, Mark.
Okay, I'm sorry, I started and I stopped. Um, I believe the terms are gonna end the same with any other appointments on uh, on June thirty.
Twenty-three.
We will send, so I'm gonna amend my motion to say for a term ending six thirty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Lisa?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Chelsea?
Hi.
And Cook is I five zero. Thank you, Patty. Welcome to.
Congratulations.
Very much, appreciate it.
Okay, um, next is chairs report, um. These two things are interconnected, so I'm just gonna talk about them kind of both at the same time, and this is really. Important, um. So, as everybody knows, EMC bought Dell, or says Medell bought EMC and they have vacated their. Three buildings that are off Crystal Pond and Cause and Drive. Um, they are trying to sell their entire property, which not only includes the industrial piece of it with the three buildings. They're trying to sell their thirty-four acres that is on partially residential and partially. Industrial. So we had a Zoom, and this is our second Zoom with. The representatives of Dell, um, at their request to basically again discuss. Issues that the town may be interested in as far as their process to. Sell these properties. On that Zoom were five or so people on the Dell side, which includes your two brokers that are trying from CPR that are representing them. Uh, we had Marty Hulahan on for a few minutes. She didn't stay for the whole thing and we had um. Dorian Jezeski came on after she finished another meeting. We had um. Colleen um, from planning board, our planning office was on and Melissa Danza was on. So it's a pretty good group. Pretty representative as far as the town goes. The. Discussion really centered around the thirty-four acres. They, they, they're gonna try to sell the three buildings either as a package or one-off. They, they actually think they can't sell as a package. They're gonna have to do them one-off, but their focus is right now is really the thirty-four acres. So they've put together a. Plan um, that they've distributed to interested buyers that. Indicate what a potential buyer might be able to do with the property. And of course, since piece of its own industrial, it's the only thing that someone's gonna be able to do with that piece of it. If they want to be residential is forty B. So we talked about that um, during the meeting for the most part, and I apologize, Mark was there too, so sorry, Mark, I let you up. Um, we talked about, we spent most time talking about that piece of it. We updated them on the fact that the. Um. Park Central developer has received his project eligibility letter. Um, and therefore his project, if approved, will put us over our. We think it would put us over at least close to the safe harbor. It may not. There's still, let me just say this, there's still a um. Difference in opinion as to what the number of units we need to get us over. Um, on that Zoom, it was stated it was forty-five. Um, after that Zoom, an email went out, said it was a different number. And then since then, it's been a different number. So it's still not clear what that number is. I think partly because Massachusetts hasn't. Finished the work they've got to do as far as updating the numbers for the two thousand twenty census. You really need that to understand your denominator. So it's still a little bit unsure what our number is, um. But we did at least update them on where Park Central stood, so they understood that Park Central was much further down the process than anybody else's. They haven't even started on a forty B application, whoever might do this. They got that. And they also understand the MBTA Communities Act. They get the impact of. That that might have on. Their property. They actually understand that, you know, their, you know, that property could be um, part of the solution. To Southborough's um, um, issues with complying with the act. So they get that too. They, these, these, these people, they're, they're, they're on the ball as far as it goes. So um, they started using the term friendly forty B, which is how they might have to do a forty B. If Park Central were to shut them out at least. Temporarily from being able to do the classic forty B through the state. So that's how far we got. We didn't go, go much further. Um, so there's just a lot of balls in the air as far as this project goes. Um, I did take the time, which Mark will confirm, to make sure they haven't forgotten our tower, that we, we, we have no agreement to be on that tower. We were promised again, um, that they're working on, we will have an agreement to stay on that tower before EMC or sells the property. Um, so I did get that in there. So that's kind of where we are at this point, um. So, everybody has seen the letter from Mass Housing. We've read it, um, we will talk about that at a later meeting. I just want to make sure everybody. We acknowledge in public that that letter has been received. We've seen all the um, points that were made by Mass Housing um, to, to developers, so. Um, here we go, so. All right, any questions on those?
Well, can I, I just say that um, I very much appreciate this update and. This was discussed also at a recent um, CHOPC meeting. Eh, about um, you know, where the site of a potential um. MBTA, the required new district that would permit um. Multi-family housing by right. Could be, and um, so I just am hopeful that all the town's communications with um. Dell and prospective buyers will be, you know, positive that there really is interest in having this site be um. Dedicated to. Affordable housing. So I'm, I'm, I like to continue to stay informed about. This and um, I sound very encouraged by the discussion that you just reported on Kathy. Thank you.
So let me add one more thing as you drive around thinking about um, what could happen. So if you put your. Developer shoes on for a moment, um. The developers are well aware of the fact that a hundred seventy-five communities in Massachusetts. Have to at least consider doing something, right? You don't have to. You could pay the price, right? Um, which we talked about briefly at our Saturday meeting, um, but if you choose to comply. Um, so that you don't forego the opportunity to get some grants, um. There apparently are some. Developers that understand this and um, could choose to. Take a bet on what land a town might use and. Snap it up, right? And if that were to happen, then you know, you, you may not be able to do a forty there, but there may be no. Chance to do any type of affordable housing because MBTA doesn't require that. That's not part of it, um.
They, I thought they allow up to ten percent. Your district can include up to ten percent.
I think it's not required, though. That's what I, my point is, it's not required to do affordable housing.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna say on this one, but there's just lots of um, thinking to be done as far as trying to make this a win-win. Um, EMC Dell, they've got shareholders to report to. They're gonna try to maximize their profits on this, um. It's probably a small thing in the big Dell world, but it's not a small thing to the local guys that are trying to get this done, I don't think. So this is important to them to. To get this done in a way that um, they are considered successful too. So we've got to always kind of put our um. Think about how they look at the world too, to try to get this, try to make it a, a um. Project that hopefully makes everybody happy, and I think it's doable, but we've really got to, to. Be, you gotta think, we gotta work together and we've got to um, probably. Work pretty fast, um. The MBTA is gonna happen fast. Dell wants to sell this fast. Um, they should have offers, they're expecting offers by the end of this month. On the residential piece of it, so there's not a lot of time to um, dwell on this, and we're gonna have to start probably putting together. Some type of specific plan to, to work on this with them. Okay, so. TBD, okay, um, next item, we're going, I, I'm pulling off Brian's contract. It's done, um, it really is done. Kate has looked at it. Um, Brian's looked at it, um, I've got the clean version of it, but I just didn't want to send it to you today and say, would you please read this in five minutes? I didn't think that was fair. Brian's fine with waiting to the twenty-eighth. Kate did ask the following question, and we'll see what you guys think about this. She said, do you really have a position called Finance Director, capital, capital F, capital D? She said, I looked on your website, I don't see it. So I called Brian, um, and I said, do we really have this position? He goes, well. Actually, probably not. Um, it used to be, his position used to be on the SAP. And on the SAP, it was Finance Director, but it's not there anymore. He's got a contract, right? Separate contract. So we may not legally have a position called Finance Director. This contract goes back a long way. As I said, it says she in it a couple of times. So it goes back a long way, probably to Janice Conlin when she was town administrator. So Kate's asked the question, so I'm gonna call tomorrow and answer the question with what I know. And but, so we may be taking out the term Finance Director and just call him Treasurer Collector, which is what he's labeled if you look at the website. So that's one thing to, to get resolved, um. Um, I was making sure it's right. So anybody have a comment on that? So everybody, okay, if we take out Finance Director, Kate thinks we should because it really doesn't exist anymore? I don't see anybody saying, no, don't do it. Okay, so that will happen on the twenty-eighth, and you'll get it well before then, so you can actually have a chance to read it and make sure you get it. Um, okay, there's that, um, ARPA. So everybody's got the. Little simple shit spreadsheet that Brian sent out. Through Melanie that shows. The details of what we're proposing to use the tax relief bucket for. So we, we've already agreed to do this. We agreed on the budget summit day to ask Brian to find five hundred thousand dollars worth of one-time things, which he did. It's just five oh eight and change and not exactly five hundred. So what would, what we need to do tonight is specifically vote on this so we can adjust our, our spreadsheet. I've got the upper spreadsheet over to my left, anybody wants to see it. And I've actually already adjusted it, so if anybody wants to know what's left in the tax relief bucket after we do this, I've got that number. Anybody want to know that? Yeah, all right, so. In that bucket, if we vote for the five oh eight, we're gonna have um. Fifty thousand, call it fifty-one, fifty-one thousand left in that bucket. Plus, remember, we've also got a little bit of extra um. From the reduction in the. Peninsula. Trails grant, um, and then we've also got the twenty thousand we can put back in that we. Allotted to the park working group that they don't need to do plans. So all in all, we've got. That's another one, so that's thirty-five and fifty, so we got about eighty-five thousand left in the tax relief bucket if we vote tonight on. The five oh eight to be taken out officially. Everybody, you understand that? You agree? Chelsea, you're okay with the numbers?
I'm good, yeah.
All right, so that's the first ARPA vote tonight, so let's just do these one at a time. We've got four things we're gonna talk about with ARPA. Okay, so um, I'll make a motion to officially approve using. Five hundred eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars of ARPA funds that are currently sitting in the ta, general tax relief bucket. And allocating those as on this spreadsheet um, for the fiscal year twenty-four budget one-time items.
Second.
All right, uh, okay. I'm sorry, Kathy, was your motion for the five oh eight nine forty or for the?
Yes, five oh eight nine forty. What did you think I said?
Okay, um, no, that's what I thought you said.
Five oh eight nine forty.
So, uh, can I speak to something? Um, just to raise the issue about the. Fire all-terrain utility vehicle, cuz I know this is something that we've talked about before, I've um. And I've heard, you know, differing views about how really necessary this is, and. I think it could maybe be characterized as more of a want than a need. So I would just wanted to find out what people's views are, but I, I know we had, this is kind of come in, come out. Um, what are people's views about potentially taking that out?
And this is the night to do it cuz we're voting on.
No, cuz then I think, I think.
Okay, so this is kind of the night to do this. If we're gonna take it out, we take it out tonight. If we're gonna leave it in, we leave it in.
It's not an insignificant amount of money.
Nope.
Yeah, I've been on the fence on this. I thought Lisa was pushing for it initially, then Lisa, I thought you backed off on it most recently, so did you not?
Well, I did, Sam, only because I didn't where it was going to be coming from out of um. The ambulance fund, and now that it's coming out of ARPA, I think at, at the last meeting, the chief made a. Another good case that there's a lot of long driveways in Southborough and, you know, it wouldn't specifically potentially be for. One specific um. Emergency that may occur, um, you know, brush fires. I think there's a variety of things, um, so I, I still am supportive of it. Um. At this time.
You know, there are other funding sources that uh, are potential for that one? I don't know.
Does anyone have an answer to that?
I think generally those are not applicable for grants, um. That's just my understanding of. Um. This piece of apparatus. I mean, I think. I think five years ago I felt differently about this, um, Andrew, and I think. Um, they've been able to expand on. The uses for it, um, and I also think that it gives the fire department a good opportunity to be involved. Um, at community events with this um, equipment as well. You know, they could go to summer nights with it. They could. Um, you know, uh, go to community things, so um, I'm still in favor of um, this one. Additionally, I would say if we do vote this tonight, um, as well as some of the other items, I think we should encourage the department heads to go out to purchase them or go out to bid. Um, now rather than um, wait, cuz this means it would come off the warrant.
They don't need to wait. I mean, once we voted, they've got the um, authority to go, so there's, there's no July first date here on these.
Right.
Okay, so um, I would characterize myself as being on the fence initially. But once, and I'm not, I can't remember who even said to me, maybe it been Jason Alonoski, described the long driveways, of which I've got. Probably the worst in this town, seriously, um. I didn't think about that. Remember, where I live, I know you guys hear this over and over, we have no hydrants over there. And so it would be nice to know that somebody could give our driveways really fast with a vehicle that I don't think that all of the um, current trucks can even get up. So that's what sold it for me. Um, I prefer for things like this when we know we've got other towns around us um, to share. Um, you know, the last time this had, what brought this up was the accident on the trail, right, where we ended up the um, the vehicle from Westboro. So I still prefer we share, but you know, it would take a while for somebody way in Westboro to get over to Pine Hill Road. Um, so I think just because of the driveway thing, there's just a lot of snaky. Hilly driveways in this town and um, being able to have a vehicle that could get up really fast where others mightn't be able to is. What's gotten me over that fence.
Kathy, can I? Go ahead. Sorry, can I just add one other thing? I think the um, power line issue on Pine Hill was another example where having. A vehicle like this might have um, been useful, especially if we had to bring citizens out. You know, with the roads being blocked and whatnot, so um, I'll just toss that in as well.
That, that's a good one. So Andrew?
Well, I remember, uh, Mr. Healy used to say, I can count the, you know, I can count the votes, so. Um. It looks like um, there's a majority of support to keep it in there, so.
I think so.
So you get a, a motion that's made and seconded, great.
Yep, and discuss.
Sorry, I have, I wanna talk about another item, that's okay.
Okay.
On the um, on the, on the annex, the furnace. I'm okay with reserving. Or earmarking the ARPA funds, but I think we need to have a more extensive discussion about the actual building and if we're keeping it long-term. I'm okay with pulling it off the warrant and using ARPA if we decide that's the route we want to go. I just don't know that we have made a decision on the building yet.
Well, if we agree with you, we ought to pull that fifteen out of the five oh eight, um, and just leave it um, in the ARPA bucket that we could always. Tonight, we're trying to literally say, we've agreed, we're gonna use this money for these things, so we should pull it out as we agree. Okay, so um, Lisa?
Yeah, I'm fine.
With pulling it out?
Yeah.
Okay, know that we still may do it once we get more information?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, Andrew?
Uh, yeah, I'm okay with pulling it up, but just where, that, that was another one where I um. Previously felt. Maybe we should remove it, but I have a recollection and I could be wrong, that at one of our meetings, John. Parent. Um. Felt that it was pretty important, because just generally speaking, we don't want to have a. A town building, e- even if it is one where we might be, um, first off, any plan to dispose of this property is gonna take quite a while. And generally, not a good idea to have any building um, that's owned by the town, have absolutely no heat. So, I mean, by just taking it out now, that doesn't preclude us if this thing breaks, or if there's a real problem from coming back and. Um, taking care of it. So I'm okay with that, but um, I was persuaded a little bit more to be more supportive of this. I'm recalling, I think, something that John said, or it could be. Something that someone else said.
No, John Parent did say that.
Yeah, okay.
But it, but it.
But I don't know that we have. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Chelsea.
I just, I, I don't think you do that. We, at least, I don't know enough about what is being used and if there's other options for that building. Or for what's in that building to go elsewhere, and does it really make sense for us to keep it on the inventory or not? That's what, I don't. That's what, I don't wanna sink money into it if we're gonna get rid of it in a year.
I understand. I think we're probably not gonna get rid of it in a year.
So I agree, the chances are unlikely, but at least this winter is not a horrible winter. Um, and it's, you know, knock on wood, it's probably almost over. But I don't want people, I I don't understand what, who's doing what in the building. But I still, if there's people going to do certain things, I don't want them to be cold. I mean, that's kind of cruel. Um, so it's fifteen thousand. That's why I didn't get too excited about it. Um, capital recommended it. So it sounds like um, Chelsea would like to take it off. Lisa, you wanna take it off?
Yes, but keep it in a bucket to be able to reuse for this, yes.
We're gonna go back in the tax relief bucket. That's, you know, we don't have, so we'll keep in tax. We got money tax relief, so we just shouldn't forget about it. You know, we oughta decide for sure once we get more financial. Sam, are you okay taking it out for now?
I'm fine to take it off, but if if it looks like we're gonna keep the building for a while, I think I believe John Parent, we need to do to do update here, so.
Okay, so Andrew, you're okay with taking it off for a while? Okay, so let's do the math. Um, so five oh eight nine forty minus fifteen five hundred. Everybody agrees it's five ninety three four forty?
Uh, four ninety three.
Got that? Okay, so I'm just gonna amend the motion. So um, the motion is to approve using four hundred ninety three thousand four hundred forty dollars of ARPA money that's currently in the tax leave bucket as outlined on the spreadsheet in front of us, except that we are going to remove the fifteen thousand five hundred from the DPW annex. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, Lisa? Andrew? Sam? Chelsea? And Cook is I, so five zero to approve four ninety three four forty or ARPA money, especially coming out of tax relief bucket. Okay. All right, next ARPA item. Um, we had talked about possibly um, funding the new newly to be approved tree fund article with some of the, what we thought was gonna be excess money from removing the hundred trees. We don't have that much excess. We thought it was gonna be about forty thousand bucks. Um, remember the original allocation between the war article on October thirteenth and ARPA money was a hundred and fifty two. Karen told us that the contract came in less with stumpies. Our share of it was a hundred ten thousand. So I rechecked with Chris Leroy and Vanessa. And Chris has said he thinks the funnel number is gonna be something around one forty, which includes the cost of the details that have been needed to remove the trees. So it's pretty darn close to what we've got allocated. So I'm not sure it's worth, you know, taking. I mean, it's it's close, so close. I don't think we should do it. It's my recommendation. We should leave it alone and find money elsewhere um, to do the initial funding of that article if that's what we choose to do. I just don't think this is a good place to do it. Lisa?
I agree. Yes, sorry, I agree.
Andrew?
That sounds okay to me.
Okay, at some point, we'll close this out. We just gotta get it done. It's gonna be done in the next couple of weeks, right? Weather's been great. Fantastic. So they're gonna get it done and we'll know um, finally what the cost is, and then we can relieve whatever's left over. But I just don't think we should do it now till it's truly done, bills are paid. Sam? Okay, Chelsea?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so it's nothing to really vote on there. Um, we're leaving it where it is. Okay, um. Sidewalks. So as we know, we've got to decide how to use the money by the end of twenty four. We've got to commit it, and then we've got to have the work done by the end of twenty six. Sidewalks are a long-term project. We've got seven hundred four thousand dollars that has been earmarked for this by the ARPA committee. In past meetings, we all five seem to want to do this. Um, we haven't talked about details, but I don't think anyone doesn't want to spend some money on new sidewalks. So stop there and make sure that still seems to be the case. Okay, so um, what I did between last meeting and this meeting, I called um, Jason Malinowski to talk to him about what we might discuss tonight as far as a plan to actually gets us going. We don't have a DPW head, um, and we don't have a um public works planning board that we are ready to ask for advice from yet. We've agreed to get the DPW superintendent in place first before we attempt to figure out how to work with the PWPB. So it seems to me that our, the viable choice here is to turn this over to capital. Even though capital normally vets projects, they don't initiate projects. They take what departments want and take a look at it. I think this may be one that we make an exception to, that we actually ask them to do the legwork on this and come forth with a recommendation um, to us as far as what sidewalks that they think should be done and where and approximate cost. So that's what I'm trying to get discussed tonight is what the procedure should be to go forward and try to get this going before too much more time passes.
Kathy, is Jason on board with that path?
Yes. So yes, he is.
Follow up question?
Yes, of course.
And I think this is another question might have been raised at prior meeting. Okay, the pavement management system software. Does this also have any capability to kind of in an objective way? There, because there are fewer streets with sidewalks than there are streets, right? So theoretically, it shouldn't be it should be a re- it shouldn't be that difficult to identify the 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 streets that do have sidewalks and to use that software and assess the condition of it and then kind of an objective way you find what places need the most repair, et cetera. Is that something we'd consider? Or we're we're actually, we're really talking about building new sidewalks here, rather than just repairing existing sidewalks?
Yeah, I think so for this. And Andrew's.
Sam, you wanna handle that one?
So the pavement management system doesn't really, isn't really relevant.
Well, it, the payment management system actually doesn't, it's not aimed at sidewalks particularly, although you could use it, but we didn't buy that part of it. Uh, but what it does do is it provides a video record of all the street miles in town. So one could actually do an assessment and effectively drive along all the streets and visually look at the condition of the sidewalks for your office, which is very helpful. But uh, the the system itself is not gonna make recommendations about uh, uh, new sidewalks, but there will be information there that you could actually look at to see where the sidewalks are or aren't without having to drive around everywhere potentially. But again, I think the uh, the issue for me is to uh, have somebody, and and again, we had, I think it was VHB Mark who did the last sidewalk thing in two thousand fifteen or whatever.
I was gonna say, it's been a number of years since we looked at that, and I think it was something that was done very quickly.
Yeah, but they, but they had a map. We've actually got a pretty interesting map available of where the sidewalks are. And I think that capital could take advantage of that. There's some places, for example, where in neighborhoods have good sidewalk networks. But the neighborhoods aren't connected, so you could drive a new sidewalk between a couple of neighborhoods and double the the, you know, pedestrian miles there potentially very easily. Those kind of things are great. And they've talked about key north, south and east, west routes, like Cordova, north, south and Parkerville and so forth to make sure they're, you know, good sidewalks around the schools, et cetera. So I think there's a fair amount of data that capital could take good advantage of and come up with some good recommendations.
Okay, so back to Andrew. Andrew, are you okay with the broad plan of um, basically asking capital to take charge of this?
Um, yes. Should we talk about? What kind of timeframe we're looking at here of?
Yeah, we're gonna get to the details in a second because Mr. Malinowski said we're gonna need some money. Um, so I'm just trying to get a general idea of whether everyone is for the broad proposition that capital is going to um, be in charge of this. This is gonna be the responsibility to come forth with a proposal.
Kathy? Can I throw in also, um, I actually, um, I think, I think uh, I wasn't on the planet public planning board at that point, I don't think, but I actually heard the engineering report on that on that uh, presentation. And the having access to the engineers who did that would be hugely helpful because they have a lot of practical input to say, here is the places that, you know, it's much easier to put a sidewalk in, or here's how you might think about this, et cetera. So as I think as Andrew is suggesting, some engineering dollars in there as well would be very valuable input for capital.
Mr. Malinowski agrees. Um, so Sam, you're okay with the broad plan of letting capital do this? Because that's what I'm trying to get to first. Okay, Chelsea?
Yes.
Okay, so I am too. So we agreed that they'll do it now. Let's talk about the details of what that means. Um, I'm sure we're not gonna answer all the questions tonight, but um, broadly, they Jason said we're gonna need some money to 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 get some help here. So we need to understand that they'll come, I think they will come forth and say, um, this is what we think we need to to do our work. They'll flush it out as far as the amount of money and who they think they need to consult with. So that's probably one of the first things, and it can give us some more details about how they plan to go about this. Um, once we have said go, um, as far as timing goes, Andrew, um, you know, I think we probably should set some type of broad um, expectation so we keep this moving. Again, we got to the end of twenty four. I don't know what it really, I meant to call Carla today, but I forgot, uh, what it means to truly have the money designated. Does anybody remember what the law actually says? What does it mean um, as far as a capital project? Do you have, you know, what point are you considered meeting that test?
I would, I would defer to Carla, but I believe you've got to have a contract. You've got to have something. Um, no offense, more tangible than simply a vote of the select board for the expenditure. So I think you've you've got to have the the money formally committed um, or expended by the end of, by the uh, December thirty first of twenty four.
So if it really means a contract, we need to make sure we, we know that, pass that, and capital knows it too, so that they understand that. Um, they will need to get busy um, to be able to get that far um, by the end of twenty four. And it's only a year and what, nine months away. It's a big project. Okay, so everybody is so great, is okay with the tentative plan here? Okay, so Mark, can you talk to Jason? Um, let him know, um, the vote we're about to take tonight so that he knows he's got the official green light to um, start working on this and thinking about the details. And he's welcome to come to us when he needs questions to answer, including the money he thinks he's gonna need for this.
Yep, I will put that on the schedule.
Okay, and before we vote, let's just talk about the money for a second. So um, how much do we have in the warrant um, for this year's town meeting for the engineering article? Okay, do we have any other money right now? Any place else that they could use?
Uh, there is money under capital's control.
Right, and that's, that's what we approved at the November first twenty one town meeting, I believe, special town meeting?
I believe so. I think it was the fall meeting.
All right, so maybe let Jason know that, um, you know, we've got the money on this warrant that could possibly be used if that passes. He may have some still left over from that, and I think they do. So um, he'll put it all together and come to us with with, we used to do. But that's to me the two places to go. Anybody else have any other idea where to go first?
Well, if you're, okay, the twenty five thousand dollar article, my understanding of that is one of the reasons for that is if there's kind of unanticipated things to come up during the year, for example, um, like the traffic study that we did. Things like that, but um, if you're, if you're talking about getting engineering for new sidewalks, I mean, I would think that it could be the very significant, it could easily take up the entire twenty five thousand dollar article. So I really would be disinclined to use that, the engineer.
The other obvious places, the seven oh four includes um, what they need for the engineer. So we can always do it that way too. Or use some of the um, excess money we've got that's not part of the seven oh four. I just like to see us get as many sidewalks as possible um, out of the seven oh four. Um, and no, I I wouldn't mind for, you know, capital come back and say, well, I know you said seven oh four, but if you had another three hundred, uh, we really could do um, a lot of really good sidewalks. So I wouldn't want to necessarily limit um, what they're doing. We can always say no. But why not have them go forth and say, you know, if you really wanted to put sidewalks where they really should be in Southborough, this is what you should do. And then we can always um, cut it down, just like they did with the recent paving contract. Here's your wish list, and this is what we can do now. But we we know now also what we could do in the future. Get it all done at one time.
Kathy?
Yeah.
I I see this as a two-step process. One is to get um, engineer or somebody who actually knows how to build sidewalks and what's involved to help do the initial uh, planning process to say, here are the places that you should think about doing more or less, et cetera. And then once you sort of get the plan down, then there's more engineering money to actually design uh, something that uh, create plans that people can use to build sidewalks to the extent that you need to you know, have detailed drawings for that kind of stuff. So to me, there's a, the useful sort of first step to lay out, you know, here's what we wanna do given an understanding of what's involved in making sidewalks here versus there kind of thing. So that's not as expensive, I would think.
But does everyone agree that we've always got the ARPA seven oh four to use for this too? Um, so we know they've got, and and they can get started right away. They don't have to wait for a town meeting vote. They don't have to wait to July first if we just let Jason know right now that, um, you know, we want him to come and find us as far as what they need, but we would be willing to use that money, that's the seven oh four bucket to get them started here.
Sorry, Kathy, can we also find out what's left in the bucket from the um, warrant article from the fall of twenty one?
Very easily.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, so um, let's take a formal vote of this so we can show Jason that we are all for this. Um, so I will make a motion to ask capital to lead this project for new sidewalks, um, to be funded by ARPA money. Um, and report back to select board as needed as far as questions, et cetera. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Lisa?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Chelsea?
Hi.
And Cook is I, five zero. Okay, check that one off. Okay, so here's a difficult one. Um, we've got to decide on the economic development coordinator soon. Um, and tonight might be a good night to decide when we're another, which way this is going. I think it's still probably a split vote. Um, I understand that personnel has not approved the position, so I get that. Um, Mark called me this week with an idea about how we might approach this. Um, so I'm gonna let him talk in a second. But one way to fund this is to do what select board decided to do last year with border health. Um, which is for the first year, use ARPA money to fund the excess cost um, uh, over the nineteen and a half position, including the benefits. So the full excess costs, which I believe we think is sixty something thousand bucks, um, last time I heard, um, that math should be checked. So do it for, do it for the first year, um, and see where it goes and then take it back up next year and see if it is something we really want to put in the budget going forward. I understand that when you hire someone, um, you'd have to tell them that, that this has been funded for one year. There's no guarantee after that. You, out of fairness, you'd have to do that. But the reason I wanted to talk about Dale tonight and Park Central, et cetera, is I think we really need to make sure we have the business aspects of what could happen in the both places. Um, well represented. So I am just convinced that we need to have a full-time person to do the things that need to be done in this talent to try to improve the business community, the business climate, what we've got here for business. So I'm willing to take a um chance that that I'm wrong, um, that this really is not gonna accomplish very much. I just think we've got to put some money into this to to try to um, restart um, the business part of this town and really bring in some new businesses, good vibrant businesses that we want. And I don't see how you do that with a nineteen and a half hour position. On top of that, this week, um, we discovered another grant that we could have applied for that we didn't, that most towns got. So we definitely miss grants. Um, um, I'm not gonna say frequently, but I can think of two that we've missed that we would have gotten if we'd applied for it most likely. So I do want someone that is going to really focus on writing grants. So that is um, the topic for for this one. Um, so I'm going to start this one with Chelsea.
So I I think doing it this way makes it extremely difficult for an employee. Um, and I'm just got through two employees that we set up this way. Um, and it's, it's it's not easy. It's, um, they're just, there's so much uncertainty. Um, and I think it can become a morale issue. So I I don't love the idea of it. Um, I would rather spend the money, if that's what we decide to do, on giving department heads the option to use a specialized consultant to apply for grants. The option to use a specialized consultant to apply for grants. Um, if they have one that comes up, or if there's some help that we need on a short-term basis to help with what you just described, Kathy. Um, I just think with the financial outlook for next year, using five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA. Towards capital this year, I would, I'm, I'm very cautious about going into FY twenty five with. Um, a bigger deficit. Um, so I have concerns about um. Tapping into what we could potentially use for FY twenty five um and creating a bigger hole. So I wouldn't be in support of it.
Andrew.
Doris, now I think um, were you suggesting that? Any money that would be set aside from ARPA for this would. It's not in there right now, so we need to, would come from another place.
I believe that um there would be support from um the gentleman to that I'm looking at to um.
Okay. Here's where I'm on this. Kathy, I completely agree with you. I thought. Though that this one, you know, the bu- the budget numbers for this year, you know, not, not great. And the numbers that we have don't include the full-time EDC position. I thought that to the greatest extent possible, and I think that, you know, this also happened um with the Board of Health um. Staffing situation a couple of years ago, we want to get as much consensus between the select board, the advisory committee as possible. On something like this, and I just, I think that the. From the Budget Summit that we had. At the um. On the Saturday meeting, there were a bunch of different views about um. This position from the advisory committee. And the thing that really struck me is that, you know, some of the things that. The reactions you hear is it actually would just be better to just, rather than have a split position, to just have it be a full-time EDC. Coordinator position um rather than a split position. So I think that there's some more kind of work that we might be able to do and maybe in connection with an effort to try to. I mean, to hire someone, it really would be good to the, to the best extent possible to have some um. More support for this, maybe at a fall town meeting. So um, I mean, I completely agree with you. Um, and I think that if you were to take some money out of the. Um, national grid bucket and reserve it for this, this would just kind of keep the issue alive for maybe a. Further consideration at a, at a fall town meeting. But um, you know, where there's going to be already a complicated. Town meeting agenda coming up next month. This discussion for, there's, there's just such a. Uh, variety of views on this, that I don't, I don't see that there's really a consensus about this. And I think with some more work, we might be able to get. More of a consensus about what um. About the job description aspects of this, right? I think I'm optimistic. Although I'm realistic, because I think some people just will never support this idea, but I'm optimistic that um. We might be able to convince some more people about the need of of making more of an investment than just the current nineteen-hour. Level staffing for this position, and maybe that just takes the form of, you know, uh. A position that is really just a full-time EDC coordinator rather than the the split position.
So let me just interject and then turn it over to to um Lisa and Sam. Um, if we were to go the route that I. Put on the table, which is to use ARPA money for the excess cost. We've taken it out of the hands of town meeting and advisory. Um, so that's, that would be the effect of doing it. I don't think advisory. Last I talked to Andrew Fab, I don't think that advisory supports the full-time position, but I I could be wrong. They may have changed their mind, but I don't think they do. I think it's a split vote there too. Um, I don't know what the split is. Um. So there's that. Um, that's what we'd be effectively doing if we did it this way. We can always bring up the ARPA vote anytime we want to do it. It doesn't have to be done tonight. But I do think tonight we've got to decide whether there's going in the budget or not, um, because we're out of time as far as that goes. Um. And it sounds like there's not support, there's not three votes to put it into the budget full-time. Um, again, I understand personnel boards um has different issues with it. Some of the issues I don't understand. They seem to be talking about the position itself versus. What it should be rated and what it should say versus whether we should have it, which is our job. Um, Mark thinks that if we will, i- if we take a look at the fact they're combining part, the the um C and A. Um, into one schedule that we could tweak the part-time position to make it work, but I'm not sure we want to go that far either. So it does sound like, based on what I've heard, that there's support for using ARPA money tonight. To do this, and it doesn't sound like there's support to put it into the budget full-time. Um, if we can get through the hurdles, we've got to get to do that um for fiscal year twenty four. But it does sound like there may be some support for bringing it up again um at a later meeting and continue to discuss this. Um, I, you know, I've been, what, doing this for fifteen, twenty years now, and I can tell you, uh, I was on advisory when. I sat there with other very uh well-respected valuable members who thought the budget of EDC should be zero, zero. Select board came to the meeting that night and um. Disagreed strongly. Um, Dan Kalenda disagreed strongly, strongly. Um, the vote was split. So we we approved the budget, but there were some there that wanted it to be zero. And I've heard the same argument for all these years, which is. Um, what's the connection? Prove what you do. Show us a direct connection between what you do and a result. And that is just never going to happen. You're not going to have someone that's going to sign the lease in Southwood because of EDC. They're going to sign the lease because they like where it is. They like the space, the rents are um are good compared to what they are in some other town. And EDC can help with that. They can help answer questions, whatever, but they're not going to be the reason someone signs the lease. But it'd be helpful to know that the business community's interests are reflected and represented. When we have meetings such as the one with um Reliant, as far as your lease goes. Um, so we do everything we can to make sure that that rolls over. And part of the discussion with um EMC as far as what's going to go in there. So I still um believe in this position. I really think we need a full-time one because we need to shore up the business community in this town before um more businesses leave. We really need to look around at other towns. They are much more vibrant than our downtown. We need help here. So um, I'm going to stop because I think this really is. Um, um, a two-three vote. So Sam, you wanna? Way in here?
Excuse me, being one of the two. Um, I guess I I'm frustrated. I think we're losing every opportunity every day. We don't do something here. And I think we have a chance to actually um accelerate this process. I certainly understand and appreciate Chelsea's point that it makes it more difficult. To hire somebody if the funding is not certain past a year. But to me, you know, that's not a reason not to try. I think there's some potentially capable people out there. I've heard the EDC folks talk about. Potential candidates and um having the the chance to move forward with this now. Particularly as Kathy suggested with the Dell property being up in the air and uh. Um, other things going on on Route Nine, West Borough is doing some interesting things development-wise. It would be great if we could coordinate better with, for example. Um, I think we're just missing out if we don't do anything. We sit on our shovels here for another six months or a year or whatever. To me, it's a shame if we do that, so. And I'm happy to redirect some funds out of the National Grid property to make this happen quickly. And uh, we'll be very disappointed if we don't, but uh, I realize that's not the prevailing view at this point, so. I've said.
They haven't been able to fill the part-time position yet. They've got, they've hired Claire Reynolds to um basically fill in with the contract at fifty bucks an hour. So um, the proof still may be the pudding. If, you know, five months from now, they still don't have someone, I still think we've got to bring this up again. We can't leave that position vacant. Completely. Um, so um, I'm not willing to let this one die completely. Um, it looks like it's going to um. Be postponed as far as.
No, I'm, I'm not either.
Okay. All right. So does everybody agree where we are tonight is we are not going to support putting the full-time position in the budget for fiscal year twenty four?
Kathy, can I give my thoughts on this too?
Did you not do it, Lisa? I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't, I did not omit you on purpose, sorry.
No, no, I know.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
That's okay. So I I agree with both Chelsea and Andrew. I think we we have an opportunity here. I think with with the job description, um, I still think it needs to be tweaked in some way. I I I don't know. That the grant writer is the right place to live with EDC. I think um. There's other opportunities that we can take the time and explore and come back to a fall town meeting. Andrew, I think that's probably the best course. To find exactly what it is that everybody needs and how we're going to get there. Um, I I have some ideas on the grant writer as well. I mean, but again, everything costs money. And I'm still not at, not at the place with the budget where it's at this year to go full-time. Um, at this point, but I think we we do need to continue to explore what we could do for EDC and, you know, the best path to get there.
So Lisa, we, you know, um, I'm for a grant writer too, so I would be happy with a full-time EDC coordinator and a grant writer. Um, as a contractor, outside con- independent contractor, ten to nine, that, you know, it wouldn't matter that it's only going to be for a year, right? It's it's upfront, you've got a lot of, you know, college kids that are getting a master's degree that have to take a grant writing class as far as their degree goes. So I, you know, we can always bring that back up too, as far as using ARPA money for that, just to try it. Let's see what happens. And then, um, you know, if it. Didn't look like it worked out the way we hoped it would, then we wouldn't um renew the contract.
Yeah. Sorry, Andrew, go ahead.
Okay, and and just one point, I know I'm in this point at for previous meetings, but, you know, I'm trying also to kind of, you know, listen. Here and, you know, to address the concerns about that I've heard that, you know, well, the the description that we had is trying to take away. You know, clearly there are some department heads that do an excellent job and other boards and committees that do an excellent job pursuing grants on their own. The idea of this was never to try to take away from that or do anything, and it really was. I think one of the genesis of this was the July, early July retreat that we had, just. Um, formulating ideas and goals for this year. And I think it was all, it always has been kind of a a well-intentioned effort to think about, okay, you know. Uh, we want to promote um maybe instead of having. Where we don't necessarily need to have two full-time employees, maybe combining some job functions that are that are related. That was kind of the whole. You know, spirit of it, but I I the main takeaway that made me a little more optimistic. At the joint meeting with advisory on on Saturday, that Saturday. Was there are some people who are interested in. Um, increasing the level of hours and moving it from a part-time, completely unfilled position right now. To a full-time position that is devoted to um EDC um coordinator, not, and. Um, I agree that the the grant writer function, it sounds like maybe that's something that's more well-suited to the uh contract. I don't think that long-term um EDC coordinator is something that's well-suited to contract. I think that. Having one person who their sole focus is, and I think the Reliant example is an excellent example. One person that, you know, that person's job is to stay on top of that discussion and try to um. Keep the lines of communication going as much as possible, or else it's just, it's not clear who who's following that. Um, or if sometimes there's someone that's lost track of it.
And can I add one final thing, Kathy?
Of course.
I I think part of the the dilemma is, Andrew, is when we hired a part-time person, we got Marika. Who just did it all. And, you know. We know that she she put in extra time to do it, but I think there's, there's kind of the boundary for me. It's like, well, we had somebody and she did exactly what we were looking for and for the budget, it was done within the timeframe. So again, I I still think that there's, there's certainly discussion here. Um. I'm just not ready to to do it tonight.
But Lisa, I would take what you said and conclude something different. She, by most accounts, worked close to full-time. And just didn't get paid for it. So she was a full-time job. That's, she spent a lot of hours. Coincidentally, I ran into her husband over the weekend. Um, and we had the best conversation. I told him how much Marika dismissed. I said, Marika, Marika, Marika. Um, and they're coming back um in three years. They're going to wait till their daughter graduates and um from the high school in Japan, she's going to, and then they're coming back. So I said, oh, well, that's interesting. I'll make sure everybody knows that. York, she is coming back at some point, maybe not to South Road, but they are coming back to the US. Okay, so I think we've gone as far as.
Well, just one, just one last thing. I mean, after she left, we've had this part-time position has been unfilled, right? So I I think that really shows of, you know, you're seeing the the results.
Yeah, I don't think we're being very practical here. I agree with you. No one seems to want this job, so we're just going to end up with a nineteen and a half hour job that's just open. Um, and so I I really do strongly disagree with this. Um. But, you know, Chelsea's probably going, Kathy, you're a hypocrite. Look how you're disagreeing with what we did with Board of Health, and now you're acting like you want to do the same thing here. I just think this position is so important um right now to this town that we really need to um do it. But anyway, okay, so um enough for tonight. I think as far as this one goes, there's no vote to take because we're not voting to do anything. All right, the last thing before we get.
Go ahead. To that point, I thought what you were suggesting is. If Sam was willing to take some money out of the National Grid article and you save some. On a. Basically, some would be reserved so that, I mean, we still need to have a job description that gets. Approved. And. Put into the SAP, right?
We we do have a job description for an economic development court, uh.
Okay.
And it's part-time, but they're merging, you know, the um C and A together into one. So Mark um. Called me this week and he said, you know, you could probably use that job description, just tweak it a little bit and it would work. But, you know. I wish we could get to an agreement on this and we're really not. So Andrew, I did suggest using the ARPA money tonight, but. I I didn't think you were going to support that, so I didn't like it was worth voting on it. Um, this was going to be a two-three vote. Um. But we can always do that. We don't have to do that tonight.
To use the ARPA money to fu- to fund the position for.
Excess cost over the nineteen and a half hours, whatever that total excess cost was, and someone did the math. Um, recently, I thought it was even you that said it was like sixty thousand dollars when you include benefits, because that person would um qualify for benefits too.
For one year.
But we don't have to do this tonight. That's my point. On ARPA, we can vote anytime, but tonight, we really, I think, have to decide whether it's going in the budget or not. We've got to get the budget wrapped up um one way or the other, because, you know, we've got basically um two more meetings before it goes to the printer.
Yeah, but even if we were going to use it for our play, then it, there would be no budget impact, because this would only be using the excess rate. Okay.
Right, that's right. So we don't have to vote on that. We don't have to take that vote to our ARPA. I think we do have to decide whether we're going to support it going into the budget. Um, you know, subject to getting the job description approved and everything vetted by Personnel Board that they should be vetting.
Okay.
Okay, so just again, we've agreed we're not putting in the budget for fiscal year twenty four, correct? Okay.
Very reluctantly, but yes.
The full-time position.
That's right, that's right.
But the halftime position is in.
Yeah, that's there, that's there. It's just unfilled. Claire um substituting until they can get that filled. But it's my understanding there has, is Vanessa still here? That there's been hardly any applicants for it, and the ones that have applied. Um, didn't seem to to be appropriate for it, is what I've been told. I don't know if that's changed.
Yeah, we reviewed applicants last summer and did not find a suitable candidate. And then the EDC was very focused on, all right, can we? Can we change this job description? Can we look at expanding this in this way? So we have not gone out to re-advertise the position, you know, for some months now. Um, so that that's the status of the recruitment right now.
So we've only advertised this once?
Correct.
I would say we shouldn't re-advertise.
Well, especially now, if we know, if we're going to say to EDC, you know, it looks like it's going to be nineteen and a half, although it stills. So you're right, maybe they should try to start advertising again to see what they come, because it's hard to, you know. If I'm going to say, well, it's clear that it's not going to work because they don't have someone for it, then we've got to have tried, right? You can't not try and say that. So I think they've got to go back to um re-advertising this now and see if they get any applicants that look like um what's looking for.
Great, I'll work on that tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, we ready to move on? All right, so the last item is a referral of a citizen's petition to the planning board because it's a zoning article. Um, it's from David Perry. Involves the property that's between Woodland um and Walgreens on Route Nine. So our job tonight is just to vote on referring, and we're not going to discuss it tonight as far as the merits of it. All right, simple. All right, Lucy, you want to make the motion?
Sure, I make a motion to refer the citizens petition article from David Perry to the planning board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, Lisa? All in favor, Lisa?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Chelsea?
Hi.
Cook is five zero. So there you go, plenty more.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just wanna point out one thing tonight. I did have a conversation now with Bob Heavy this afternoon. Uh, he called me. Um, because this was on the agenda this evening.
Can you explain to everybody who Bob Heavy is?
I'm sorry, Bob Heavy is the owner of the parcels in question within the, within the, um, proposed citizen petition. Article, uh, and he just wanted to let me know that, um, he is not involved with this petition. Um, and, uh, you know, has, has no interest in this position moving forward. He wanted the board to understand that. Um, and I had told him that, um, you know, it's probably better for him to have those conversations. Um, in the planning board hearing process, um, when planning board, um, takes, takes this up in the near future.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, so now we are to the. Main topic tonight, which is the proposed IMA for the regional dispatch center to be located in Westboro. So before we get started, a couple of updates for, for everyone. I think everybody here knows it, but it's for the public. So. We started off with seven towns that were interested in doing this. Um, three dropped out fairly early. We're down to four, which included Hockington. Um, Grafton, Westboro, Grafton, Westboro voted in favor of the IMA last night at their meeting. Hockington voted against it in a two to three vote. So at this point, there is Grafton and Westboro that have voted yes. And then, um, our turn. Agree, Chelsea? Okay, so, um. We will be taking public comment on this, so we'll have to watch for hands. This is, this is why we're here tonight. So, um, Chelsea, did you wanna show the PowerPoint that we got?
Yes.
Okay, so you wanna take over?
Um, Vanessa, do you have it ready? To share?
Yes, hang on.
Okay. And Kathy, Mark's gonna, um, walk through the slides.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, again, I, I don't wanna, um, I'm not gonna take credit for this. This was a presentation. Um, that Westboro had prepared and, um, there was, there were some people that, that watched this last night. Thought this might be at least a good, uh, table setter, just to, um, give a brief, uh, overview of where we are. Um, in terms of the, um, in terms of the projects, uh, the project. So again, regionalization. Um, you know, it's a collaborative approach, um, to, um, you know, to, to common issues. And in this case, emergency response between. Uh, multiple municipalities. Um, it allows municipalities to share costs, resources and benefits. Um, Massachusetts currently has thirty-two regional emergency communication centers. There are seven more currently pending. And, uh, Southborough is exploring, uh, uh, it's, uh, the acronym is REC. Um, with Grafton and Westboro. And again, as mentioned by the chair, um, Hockington is no longer. Um, in, in consideration, having voted not to support at this time. Uh, next please. This is simply just a map. I'm not gonna dwell on it. Um, it just simply shows you where the consolidations for the regional. Um, uh, communication centers are in the state. You'll see that there's a lot, they're a lot more prevalent out in Western Massachusetts. Uh, and, but you're starting to see them pop up now more in the central part and eastern Mass, uh, as well. Next slide. This is just a, uh, a little bit of a descriptor, um, as to the population and the total nine-one-one calls that we have. Um, with regard to Southborough as well as the, the two potential partners, Grafton and Westboro. Um, as you can see, you know, we're a little bit on the smaller side, um, in terms of, uh, both population and calls. Um, and it's not a whole lot more to say about this. Next, please. The, um, the local, uh, regional dispatch, um, what we would look to do would be a standalone district operated by its own staff and management. The oversight for the district would come from three boards, uh, the board of directors. Each town would have a member. Um, uh, would have one vote on the board of directors. There would then also be a finance subcommittee. And an operation subcommittee, which will consist of the fire and police chiefs for each municipality. The, um, the rec is planned to be located at the Hokamunko Pond site in Westboro. Um, uh, applications furnished around of the public, regional public safety grant funding are due on March second. Um, just a little bit about, and I think, um, Vanessa, if you wanna go to the next slide, please, a little bit about the site. Um, as I think we have discussed, this is a, um, a super fun site. Um, on February ninth, Westboro officials, uh, met with DEP and EPA. And had a conversation with them about the site. Um, the, um, EPA and DEP officials, um, are. Um, supportive of the project as presented. Um, obviously there's going to have to be some ongoing testing and things that are done. Um, the site has been deemed safe, um, for, um, occupancy. Um. But the district would have to engage, um, a licensed site professional, LSP, similar to what the town has engaged for Breakneck Hill. Um, just to ensure that any plans that are being developed, any constructions being developed is gonna be in conformance. Um, with the requirements of the site. The benefits of moving forward the regional dispatch, um. In FY twenty-two, the cost for dis, for, uh, for dispatch services in Southborough was, um, about four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Based on the work that was done by the Collin Center, um, in, in studying this issue. The estimated assessment for Southborough as part of a regional, um, dispatch center would be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that's after you back out Hockington from the calculations that were presented in the report. Southborough's current capital plan has an item in there for a placeholder for nine hundred thousand dollars for dispatch and emergency radio replacement costs. In fiscal twenty-nine, this is gonna be to upgrade our nine-one-one equipment. Obviously, moving to a, a regional approach. Means that we're replacing, um, the equipment once and we're splitting it among the number of communities rather than each community having to. Take care of that cost on their own. Um, the estimated recurring cost savings is, is about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. There is an asterix. Um, it, well, one of the members did point out to me, um, well, there's nothing that's tied to the asterix. So let me tell you what the asterix means. Um, essentially, there are going to be some expense that we are going to have to look at, um, between the chiefs. As to how we're gonna address the staffing in the station, obviously not having a dispatcher there. We'll have to address that issue. I know the board has mentioned, I believe at the last meeting, should we decide to move forward, that is something the chiefs are going to need to look at. And begin to develop a recommendation for. Um, obviously, um, you know, there are additional grant and state funding opportunities. For the regional dispatch centers. It does seem that the funding is moving in that direction, um, from state nine-one-one. Uh, increased service capacity, you know, you're pooling your resources, um, your overall ability to respond to larger scale events. We do seem to. Um, be having events that do cross, um, jurisdictions. Uh, of our, of our towns and into our neighbors' communities, uh, and, and so it's, it's good to be able to help to address those issues. Um, again, mutual aid, same thing. Um, personnel, um, standalone districts with, with dedicated dispatch staff and management. And also, um, you know, creates a capacity, uh, for individual town staff who are currently, um, overseeing dispatch operations. In the community. Uh, next, please. So finally, um, as, as was, um, as the chair alluded to. Um, we are, um, looking at, at next steps. Select Ford and West Corr and Grafton both unanimously approved the IMA. Uh, last evening in separate meetings, Hockington voted not to move forward with this. Um. Uh, Westboro, um, Westboro's fire chief and the Collin Center have identified startup and construction costs for which the grant will be applied. That application is due to the state by March second. Um, the, um, the police and fire chiefs. Uh, here in Southborough, obviously, as I said, are gonna have to start taking a look at how we're going to address those staffing issues. That will come as a result of moving to a regional approach for dispatch. Uh, and I think that, that that is something this, this board has already said that they would be. You know, we would have to do as a result of, of moving forward. And then Westboro would be starting to take a look at. Uh, putting together a lease agreement for the, um, the Hokamunko Pond site, uh, for consideration and negotiation with the district. So. Um, I, I think that gives you at least a broad brush of where we are. Um, I know this board has brought forward, um, a lot of concerns. Um, I believe at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Stivers had eleven. Um, and, and I think that the IMA document that is in front of you for consideration this evening. Takes a lot of, um, of those comments into consideration and the changes, um, that have been made to the document. I, I just wanna say. Um, that I do appreciate the considerations of the other communities to make the changes in order that, um, to, to make the document. Um, a, a better document for Southborough. So, um, I appreciate the collaboration and the process, but I think that, that gives you. A broad brush of where we, where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Purple. That was great. Um, okay, so the, the plan is for us to discuss this, see. Who wants to, um, comment from the public, um, continue to discuss it and actually vote tonight. Supporting the IMA, the most recent version of IMA, given the deadline for submitting the grant. So I, I was gonna start this one out, um, and just. Remind everyone that when the gentleman from, from the state came in front of us in November. He stated that. The state prefers, we, we, we could have done one of two things. We could go forward with a executed IMA. Or we could have gone forward with basically just an expression of interest, a letter saying we would like to receive a grant. To entertain doing this, a much more, um, loosey-goosey, non-legally binding agreement. He clearly stated that the state prefers the signed IMA, that we would get more consideration, therefore more money. Um, if we went that approach. So that's where we are tonight. That, that's part of this decision is that the signed IMA. Should result in a larger grant, um, to, to come to this group to build this new rec. So having said that, my, um, what I'm gonna say now is, um, does, it doesn't reflect the IMA. I think we've done a good job. Uh, with the IMA as far as improving it from where it started. So, um, kudos to everybody to, to getting that done. But I think that we aren't ready to do this tonight. I think this has gone too fast. I think that a lot of what's been done has been done because of the timing of the grant. Um, which we. Have had a recent experience with. Um, we, we need to be careful as far as doing that. This is a very, very serious decision. As far as I'm concerned, I know there's, you know, we, there's a get out, um. By June first, if we wanted to. I know there's a way to terminate the contract down the road if we wanted to, but as far as I'm concerned, um, those aren't good things to happen. Especially the one to terminate down the road. So I don't wanna go in this with the, um, thinking that, well. It, we can change our mind. I really think we need to go in thinking that this is a done deal. We've made a good. Solid, long-term decision for this town. That is a serious decision. Um, and we feel good about it. Um, other states have always had regional, um, dispatch centers. We're just kinda slow to this. I wish we had started off that way. We wouldn't be having this conversation because change is hard. We know that our local dispatchers don't support this. I don't think any dispatchers. Support this because it's a big change. So we understand that, but I think our job is to look beyond that and see what's truly best for this town. I actually support the concept of regionalization of dispatch. Um, I just don't think that we have done all the homework we need to do to make sure we, we understand this and have thought through. All of the details. So I just wanna make it clear, I actually am convinced that regionalization in some form. Is the better alternative to what we have now. Chief Achilles has stated that the issue we're trying to solve, the biggest one is the lack of redundancy. In our operation, we only have one person per shift. If we have complex events, we have multiple events that occur simultaneously, it's a problem. So that to me is still the main issue we're trying to solve with this. So I support regionalization in some form. I just don't think we're there yet and we've really vetted this the way we need to. So these are my specific problems. The site, um, we basically haven't looked at any site, but this one, we basically had Westboro tell us this is where they wanna do it. Hockington wanted a different place and they, they kinda got shut out of that conversation. So it's like the site was just picked for us because Westboro needs a place to. They need to use this space for something. They've got a committee forum to figure out how to use the space. We know that this space is environment, environmentally challenged, um, and I'm saying that nicely. I've done a whole lot of reading last couple of days, as much as I can possibly get my hands on as far as this goes. And I am really, really concerned about this site. Um, we've got places in Southwood that would work for this EMC. We've got the tower sitting right there next to one of their buildings. So we didn't consider any other site, which I think is. Not appropriate. We really should have had a full-throated discussion of an appropriate site. Instead, we just left. Last round of this one to begin with and never looked at other sites. Lease. I wanna see the lease before we go forward because I wanna see lease and see what it says and make sure that we really are. Going to be properly identified as far as this dirty site. Um, but I wanna make it clear, I, that. The indemnification is important, but I don't wanna put our people on a dirty site. I wanna make sure that we know that we have. Put them on a place that is safe to work. They're gonna be there long hours and we need to understand more about the site than we do right now. There are people in this town that think that this site is really, really polluted in that. We haven't done our homework as far as understanding it. And so to hear that on the night, the DEP and EPA came out and said it's okay. Well, you know, they written report. Um, I just wanna make sure by talking to someone that really knows this area, that comes in front of us and says, yes. Um, the steps are taken, this is what it is, and your people really will be safe. There's not gonna be an issue down the road that is gonna come back to haunt us. I think we've gotta be really sure of that. So that's one big category of, of issues I've got. Financial, um, I still don't understand the finances here. To say that the Collins Center and the Westbrook chief, um, put together the cost. I mean, they didn't have the cost. Couple of weeks ago, so I don't see how you put together the cost that quick. It's gotta be a real rough estimate at best to get this done. I still don't understand why we are convinced that we're gonna get all of the money we need to do this. Um, no one told us that when they came in front of us. Um, there's forty million dollars to be spread among all applications this year. And since the applications aren't in. I don't know why there is any certainty as to what we're going to get. And I really do wanna understand the finances in more depth than I do now. I absolutely agree there's gonna be a savings here, no doubt about it. Um, and I think that is an important component of this decision. But we don't have to make the decision tonight. Um, the money is gonna continue to come in to fund these grants. It comes from cell phone surcharge. So it's not a, if we don't do it this year, we can't ever do it. We certainly can. Um, third thing is Framingham. You know, now that Framingham is considering some type of rec. I don't think it's exactly like this. I think it's different, but I'd like to understand more about that to see if that's a better alternative than, um, joining. Grafton, Whisper. I don't know, maybe it's not, um, but I still would like to understand that. Um, fourth, I do wanna look at all options of somehow solving our problem. This may be the better one. I don't know if it is, it very well could be, but I still want to understand whether, um, lopping on to an existing rec like Foxborough. Or trying to solve our problem locally, or this is a better choice. And we've never had that kind of discussion. College Center was not engaged to look at all alternatives. They looked at this one and came back with a very nice report. Well done. But they didn't look at alternatives and come back with recommendations as to what would be best for Southborough. Fourth, I think the issues that we've talked about recently, including tonight, which are what do we do, um, with no dispatcher here? As far as the, what we call a dark station, I think that's important. When I sat down with Kyle the night that, um, we had our meeting canceled with the DPW. Interview, he, ew, it was kind of eye opening. We went through, I, I tried to make him give me specific examples of where his concerns were. I know why he's concerned. I mean, you know, um, there's a lot of personal concerns as far as moving here, but he had some concerns that. Made me rethink this whole thing. And the example he gave with going dark was, he gave me two examples of times where it was really. Important that there was a dispatcher in that building where they sat with something that happened in the lobby. So I think we've got to, we've got to say this is what we're gonna do. Um, I know that we think that neighborhood communities think that this is not a problem, that they've done it. And it's okay, but I really want to have that discussion and make sure that we agree that that's not a problem. So that's my operation piece of it. Um, but bottom line, we don't have to do it right now. I don't think we spent the time with this. I think we've, um, we've. Um but bottom line, we don't have to do it right now. I don't think we spent the time with this. I think we've um we've we've had a deadline and we have. Done, you know, we we've gotten a lot done. We've had some discussions, but I don't think we've had the complete discussion we need to have as far as this whole thing. And I really want the site looked at to make sure that this really is the best site for this and make sure we've looked at. Choices and not just this one site that clearly Westboro wants to fill because of the problems that it has. Um so I just wanna start off with that, uh because. I am sure I'm in the minority as far as this goes, um and then let the four of you um basically take it from here as far as discussion, and then we'll bring the public in and then we will. We will discuss more and then we'll vote. Okay, so um Lisa, I'm gonna go around again so I can make sure I get everybody. So I'll start with you.
Okay, Kathy, I don't know if you wanted to go to Chelsea to maybe comment on some of the things you said. She. Has been working on this for eighteen months for the board. So again, and if not, that's fine. If you just wanna go in order. Obviously, that's fine too. I just didn't know if there was anything she wanted to add to.
I was doing this on purpose so she could kinda wrap up everything when we get, so she hears from the four of us, and she's done this the most. And has more information, so she can kinda take all four sets of comments and basically um comment on those and put her comments inside. It was doing this on purpose to let her go last.
Awesome, thank you. So I think we've all talked to a lot of people. I I know I have offline about this. And it's one of those where there's no gray area. Either somebody supports it or somebody doesn't support it. Um. One of the things that's important for me is we've had both chiefs agree. That this is the path that we need to go at this point. I think we've. Put them in a position to be able to to guide our paths in some way and. To know that there may be a liability there as well. So then I looked at what do we do next, you know? What what is the correct path for the town? Is it the regional center? Um have all of them been successful? No. Um I think some of the first ones, I know we've been supplied some information going back to court cases, going back to, I think it was two thousand ten. Um I think a lot of things have changed since then and um. I I think there's some very successful centers out there. We've all seen Foxborough. And I think we can all agree that done correctly, it can work and it could benefit the towns. Um well, then I looked at what would we need to do to fix some of the concerns here. With our own. We'd have to make some major investments, including personnel. Um looking at two dispatchers, which would be potentially three to five more people. Um which would be a large increase, obviously, in salary and benefits. Uh there'd be. I think additional training is one of the keys. If that's the path this board is gonna go, is to stay in-house, there is some some. A lot of training that needs to take place, plus upgrading the equipment. Um. Knowing that the nine-one-one grants are focusing more on the regional centers going forward. Um. I also worry about that if we wait, we're gonna miss. Um in the agreements being able to have a board, have members on the board, um having a higher assessment later. Um have there been learning curves with others? Yes. But we have an opportunity here to get in on the ground floor to make this. The center that we want it to be and that that our taxpayers expect it to be as well. Um to chart the future of Southborough. Um change is always hard. Change isn't always good. But you can't be afraid to move forward and and to take the opportunity. Um we started out with seven. Um do, you know, do they know better than us? Is that why they left? I think some of them left because certain towns were. Wanted the centers to be where they're at. Um dark station, I think if we do go forward, that we need to. Create a path sooner rather than later on on what this board um expects, you know, what the taxpayers can expect, and I think we would need to share them. Uh share those thoughts with them as well. Um so based on all of these comments, I'm I'm. Fine with moving forward. Um I would hate to lose an opportunity. And Kathy, I I. Understand all of the points that you made. I shared some of those myself as we went along. Uh it's it's tough to weigh, so. That's where I'm at. Thank you. Oh, one question if I may. Chelsea, when you you get to the follow-up. Um did you, if you could answer as well, if you had any conversations with. Other select boards or members from other towns that have kind of gone through this process outside of Westboro, Grafton. Can she answer that now, Kathy?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um I did have the opportunity to speak uh to a selectman um out out of the Foxborough rec. Um and and the initial conversation that um. She's from the town of Easton had was around the finances for this. Um and trying to get some cost savings um there, and she definitely had concerns about. Moving forward um to go to a rec. She had seen ones not to be successful. Um but they did move forward with it and um she said that she is. Extremely happy with the results of uh of it. Obviously, we've all seen the Foxborough site, so we can um understand. The successes that they've had. Um but she said just to be able to keep up with the technology. Um has really been a benefit to um the community. So she was um. Very, it was very encouraging to talk to her and she, she said you just need to make sure it's the right. Decision for your community at the time and um. So I actually explained to her that we didn't look at it initially for, from a financial perspective, but can see the um the cost savings. So. It was um, it was a good conversation and she was very positive about every aspect of it. So let me add to that. I sent everybody an article um early on from a paper that covers Foxborough and it raved about theirs. Um so I totally agree with um the analysis Foxborough. And remember. What I'm saying tonight is I support regionalization. I'm absolutely supportive. I just think we've gone too fast. I wanted to slow down. I don't. I think it's not, we haven't done what we've gotta do to support this I M A at this time, because tonight is. The night. Um I just got too many questions, but I absolutely support the concept of some form of regionalization. It's just the time. That I am um advocating for tonight. Okay, Lisa, anything else from you?
No, that's it. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, Andrew, you're on.
Yeah, I I am also um prepared to vote to approve this tonight. I think that. Um throughout this whole process, one thing which has been very important for me is just the strong support of both the police and the fire chief for. This. And I also have in mind that uh particularly Chief Achilles had stressed that if we were to regionalize, he thought that there was value in doing so with. Our mutual aid partners. And that, I mean, I think there's something significant about the um long-term trends here and the just the fact that the state. Has been encouraging municipalities to move in this direction. I, you know, I think Lisa put it well, this is one where. Certainly, uh um there have been, I I can't really count the number of meetings we've had that have touched on this. Um topic. So, you know, it's it's. I feel like um Kathy, respectfully, what you're suggesting is it's not really a, it's a making a decision not to decide, and I feel like I have. Comfortable with the process that we've followed. I think that we've been well represented in these negotiations. And I I know that there was a negative vote from Hopkinton, but I thought that there was significant that there was unanimous support from the. Um select boards in Westboro and Grafton too, and I think it's, this is an opportunity to. Going where we have two, at least two other partners who are. Committed to this, and I think the trend is gonna be that communities that they cold-feed and don't get into these districts are gonna be. Um in a position where they're eventually looking to join other recs and they're not as uh well-positioned. As they would have been if they had um entered at an earlier stage. So uh that's where I stand.
Sam.
Okay. Um I'm basically still up in the air on this. Um I uh appreciate a number of comments that have been made. Um I fully support a regionalized approach to this. It's clearly the way the world is headed. And it's uh uh made increasingly easier by advancing technology. It's gonna get easier and easier to do this. And it clearly works well for many districts out there. Not perfect, but there's a lot of data that says that this is an effective way to deal with this. And I don't think that um that uh we can avoid the fact that it makes good economic sense. We can't afford to uh. Uh staff like we uh would get staffing in Iraq, but even more important, I think, is the public safety issue and that having a good backup. For significant events, complex events, et cetera. I think it's critical. And I think you get that in Iraq uh much more effectively than you get on your own. So that to me is a. And another important reason to actually regionalize this. Um the issue for me boils down again to, I steal from Kathy's list here. I'm still not convinced about the site. Um I've read the EPA stuff. I know that the uh Westboro Public Health, the person said that it's okay on that site. I'd be interested in getting back from our Board of Health about uh their view of uh, you know, with that, is that a site that they would be comfortable working in? Sending their families to work in, et cetera. And uh I I also think that uh if we do move forward, this uh very strong indemnification language and lease agreement. So that Westboro, as the owner of the property, stands behind any claims that might be made relative to the site, uh seems to me to be. Critical to our fiduciary responsibility here. Um I also have a lot of questions about the financial details. I've seen the high-level summaries, but I'd like to know what goes into them in more detail. And I'd be interested in sort of an external review of those details, maybe by uh current uh rec financial person to make sure we haven't overlooked. Anything that's important. And also interested in understanding if the grant money doesn't come through as we expect. What does that mean in terms of the impact on the participating communities here? And look at it over the uh more than a five-year period, the state. Phase for the first twenty, first five years, what happens after that. Uh I haven't seen numbers that look out for those uh timeline on that. So again, that would be something that I'd be very interested to know. Um also, uh as people have suggested, and they need to. The dark station issue um and understand the cost of that and what we're gonna do. I think that we. Not dark station and that adds some to the cost here. So those are my sort of high-level issues, and I've got a number of points in the uh I M A. A lot of things that we talked about at the last meeting and have been addressed. Maybe Chelsea for getting those points in. Glad that the other communities have been, were accommodating on that. Um I'm just gonna run through a quick list here, some nits, but uh some more significant points. Initial paragraph, the final word rec is in quotes, should be in parentheses also. Section one, line four, needs the rec instead of just rec. Section five C, um I'm a little confused. It says the rec receives nine-eleven calls and other calls on pre-specified numbers. Like alarms and animal control calls. And section six A four says the rec receives non-emergency fire police. Regular business line calls. And so I thought after this was implemented, the town would still. Police and fire departments would see, receive regular business line calls. So I think, at least I read that as inconsistent and uh seems to be. We need to be clear on that point. Um. Section eight B, lines eleven and twelve, uh I don't think it's clearly stated, so it should be unless the remaining members of the Board of Directors. Via majority vote authorized, et cetera, et cetera, there. Uh section eight C five, I don't understand the language. It says all telecommunications costs, maintenance costs. And expenses for equipment located within the its community shall be the responsibility of the Metro West R E C C District. Uh that sounds to me like it's saying the rec is paying for our local communications infrastructure, which I don't think is expected to be. Yeah, and I was confused by that, and that would be useful to clean that up. And then uh section ten, line eighteen, uh talks about participating municipalities and participating communities again. And and then section sixteen, second paragraph says the staffing goal should be. Of uh no less than the current uh cumulative total of the participating communities. I thought that should be no more than. We're supposed to actually get economies out of this, so we ought to have staffing. Less than the total of all the, all the community staffing at this point, the dispatch, I would think. So I thought that was backwards. Uh may not be. Uh and then my really big issue is last time I talked about. Against the uh assessment that we thought was unreasonable as a single community. And uh the language has now been changed in terms of the termination. Process to allow for a much quicker termination if one community feels like they have a problem with whatever they can get out. More quickly now, which is good. Uh however, there is, there was language in the prior draft. At the end of uh section ten that talked about um the uh district taking on debt responsibilities. And the prior language basically said that they gave details about the issuance of debt and said that the debt had to be approved by each uh. Participating community select board for it to be issued. And that whole last paragraph is now missing there. And so that, in my view, puts us at risk for a a debt issuance that we don't agree with. That could be a real financial burden to us without having any recourse to uh not approve it other than terminating the agreement. So.
Sam, I thought that in that section, we referred to the statute which required the select boards to respond.
Okay, does that statute, it does refer to the statute. I didn't actually look.
Okay, let me just double check, but I'm pretty sure that's, I'm pretty sure that's the one that we talked about, just replacing. The language. Let me just look it up quick.
So if that is included there, then that that takes care of my concern about that, because I I thought that was an important check to have in there.
Yeah, I agree.
I think, I think the issue was trying to, trying to be a little bit too verbose about it, and if the M G L changes. Then you've gotta go back in and make the change in the document, but if you reference the M G L, then it will automatically move with the language.
That's what was said the night Liz was with us.
Um. Talked about, I should have talked about the uh indemnification stuff, but regardless, if it's there, that's fine. I I can look it up.
Well, let's make sure, cause that is important. So Sam, you are, just so you know, you're a little bit hard to hear, um but I think we got most of it. I don't think it's sitting, I think your your internet's maybe blinking a little bit. Um. Was the last part, the substantive issues, that one, then the, and I agree, it sounds weird that we're not gonna have any less than. Why would you say that? Why wouldn't you say no more than?
More than, yeah. So that struck me as odd. So, so anyway, uh. Again, I I wind up at the point of saying that uh I'm prepared to vote in favor of this. Um contingent on getting answers to some of the questions that I raised, but uh if if I don't get the answers that make me comfortable about. My concerns here over the next sixty days, let's say, then I would be in favor of uh. Uh voting to uh not proceed after the June first deadline. So I I'm, again, have some significant concerns. I think regionalization is great. I think that if we don't do this. Um I don't see that this precludes our doing a regionalization deal with somebody else. Uh at some point down the road and uh, for example, a Foxborough is always out there and uh. You know, we could do that quickly if we chose to. There may be others like Framingham or others that uh make sense as well. So um I think, again, regionalization. I think is important and we should do it uh as soon as we can find a uh a good partner to work with. But uh I'm not convinced, this is not immediately obvious to me that this is wow, let's take it before we lose it. So. I'm sort of still in the testing phase, but I'm prepared to vote to support it tonight.
Okay, so Chelsea, before um you kinda summarized what you heard from everyone and um cite what you want to to talk about specifically. Um I'm still gonna vote against this because I am really concerned about the site and I really wish we would take more time and wish all three towns would take more time. Um but I know that Westboro and Grafton are um probably not gonna do that. They've got a unanimous vote and they seem all along to have been the most anxious to get. Get this going forward, but. I think we owe it to, with our jobs, to between now and June first, um assuming we vote. Tonight to to sign this I M A to address some of these issues we've all brought up, including the dark station, including the lease. And especially the site. Um it's my understanding that there is a list of types of businesses, et cetera, that right now are precluded. From using that site. Um and there are things like daycares, I think, that are specifically excluded. Um so I know I wouldn't put my child in a, even if the daycare could be there. Um so I think we've got to use that standard um in the end. Before June first to make sure that this site is really going to um be safe or whatever they are doing to try to. Clean this up. And I know there's many efforts have been made. I know there's a process. I've read the um last report and I know there's another report coming in a year. So I'd much rather wait for that report to be done um so that we really know for sure that this place is safe and that we really investigated other. Sites that could be even better, which I don't think was ever done. I think the site was just kinda picked at first, and I don't think enough dealers have been done on the site, but I'll say no more. Um so Chelsea, why don't you wrap up what you've heard so far, then we'll see if anybody from the public wants to to speak.
Okay, so I'm just gonna respond to a few of the comments.
Okay, so I'm just gonna respond to a few of the comments that were made. Um, we did look at um. A state nine one one option, which um, they were about to sign a lease um, for Milford when. Um, that came up, I don't know what the status of is of it is now, and the reason why we didn't go forward with that was because it was gonna. State nine one one was gonna set theirs up first, and then the towns could roll out, so it was gonna be several years. Before we would have the opportunity to get into there, so we did look at another site outside of this one. The Framingham, um, one, as I understand it, um, may not be a district, it may be a host. Um, a host district, which means that a town runs it versus it being. Equal partnership with each town, um, and so I would have concerns about joining that type of. That type of rec. Some other things about the site, um, one of the reasons why the site is. Good is because of the height that it's at, and Motorola's gone out and. Um, done an analysis on the radio. The radio strikes from that site to each town, um, and they were happy with. Um, whatever, I I don't, I'm obviously not expert in radio signaling, but they were happy with um, the potential. Of being able to reach all of the locations in the towns. Um, I did spend some time with Melissa Danza, our conservation agent, to review all the reports from EPA. Um, and she, um, she went through everything with me and her. One question was if we were gonna be able to pull. Um, water from town water versus a site, meaning a well. And the response from Westboro was that we would be able to pull water from um. The street and not have a well, that was definitely gonna be a concern if it was wild water. So I did, I did spend a decent amount of time with her, I would encourage any of you to go talk to her. About what she saw in the reports in terms of contaminants, I'm not gonna do it justice. Um, she's a much better resource and understands it a lot better than I do, but after speaking with her, I. I did feel confident in the reports that had been done by EPA. Um, that they have done their due diligence on this and that over the last ten years, there the. Um, contaminants have not increased, and she said just as long as they continue to do that. Um, do the testing and make sure it doesn't increase, then she really wasn't concerned about it. Um, she did mention to me that a lot of times superfund sites are repurposed as for these. Um, and so she was actually very happy that um. That this was a suggestion for a dispatch center, she thought it was a good use for a super fund site. Um, so I would definitely encourage any of you to go speak with her.
And she's read every one of the reports?
She went through them with me, yeah.
She's read them?
Yeah, and she went, and there's a lot of information on the Westboro website as well. Um, for the repurpose committee that they have, so there's additional information on that site as well. So that's pretty much on the site. Um, in terms of the the IMA and the communities that we're working with. I cannot say enough about how well we worked together to get the IMA from point A to point B. I think, um, I would, I would say our chiefs probably say the same thing about um, the mutual aid relationship that we have. So I feel very confident that we can continue to work collaboratively with Grafton and Westboro. Um, as, and I think. I think that will speak to being able to build the center. So I. You know, I I hear you, Kathy, on. The timing, um, but I also think that we know we have a liability and I'm not prepared to double our. Dispatch budget right now, I've sat down.
Norm mine.
So I've sat down with Chief Achilles and listened to some nine one one tapes. And I do think this is the right time to do it, I think that. I'm concerned for the safety of our public safety officials. Um, I've heard from both fire and police, I understand the concerns, I think that we need to address. Um, concerns, but I think we, I think we can do it in a fiscally responsible manner. And I'd like to get some sort of plan before June first with the chiefs. On how we would, what the options are for the station. I also think that we should continue to work with the communities before June first on a lease, so I. I would encourage us to kind of keep moving that forward and know what we have. Um, before that July first, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, June first date. So, I think I hit on most of the points, Sam, I probably.
I I did look at the citation and it has what I was looking for in there, so thank you.
Okay, good, okay. So, and again, this is a big document, this is four different towns, four different councils looking at it, so is it perfect? Probably not, but I think we made a lot of progress and I think we addressed. A lot of the main issues, Sam, if you can send me a list of the. Um, ones you pointed out, because I couldn't carry that well, uh, but I don't think anything was substantial.
The only one, how about, how about the less than and more than?
Okay, so that was, um, that was a request from Huffington specifically.
Oh, that's easy.
So, um, that might be one that.
I mean, it makes no sense to say.
And I I'm happy to send this, but on, um, there was one language issue where I do think it meant. There there were two provisions that they seem to be. Inconsistent with each other, just want to highlight them. Okay, five E two. So five E is specifying that, okay. Special operations are as follows, fire, police, EMS calls for service. Are to be answered at the map for OSWAC, rec. And then E two, non-emergency or business calls other than the nine one one emergency line. Will be answered each participating community's fire police. Headquarters, et cetera. And then. So I I I get that basic distinction, right, the rec answers. Fire, police, EMS, non-emergency business calls go to the police station. So then section six is rec duties and responsibilities. And then A four is. The duties and responsibilities, the rec shall include the following, and is. Four is receipt of non, non-emergency fire police department traffic on a regular business line. I didn't understand that.
That was on my list, too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's one I need to check on.
So it's my understanding that the non-emergency calls. Were still gonna go locally, that's not true?
That is true.
Okay, so that's pretty much part of the dark, um, you know, you've got to deal with that issue. Or as dealing with, we're not gonna have a dispatcher there twenty-four seven to handle those calls and to deal with traffic coming in on the front door. So just to um. Reiterate what I think we're, you're saying. When this goes forward is that between now and June first, we're going to address that issue. Um, and we're going to basically require that a lease be done. Um, so we know what the lease says, and I would still add a third one to it, and I think the public would probably appreciate this, is to bring someone in that is an. Unbiased, objective expert in the field of contamination to. Assure us that this site is appropriate to put human beings on eight hours a day. I really want someone to say that, so we've got time to do that, um, so those three things will go a long way to satisfying me. Um, as far as, you know, not wanting to um, um, withdraw from this by June first. Chelsea, what's the timing, do we think, on receiving the grant notification? Well, we saw the email from the state guy that really wanted us to change the thirtieth to the first, right? Because they wanted a chance to be able to redeploy. The funds if we were to withdraw, um, or this were to go away, so to me, the implication is. Maybe June, um, so that, you know, he knows we're in on June first, so they know they've got a decision they can make. Um, that would stick, so it sounds to me like it's June, based on his email, but that's, I'm reading between the lines.
I don't have a clear answer on it.
We don't have to have it done, okay, all right, so anybody else want to comment before we see if there's anyone in the public that wants to come over and comment? Right, well, right now, I don't see a hand up, it's. Vanessa, you're great, there's, yep, there's one, okay, so bring over John Thorburn. Hi there.
Is my picture gonna appear?
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Okay, uh, I thank you for the opportunity to, uh, wait a minute, yeah.
So now you're muted, if you don't know. So Mr. Thorburn, we can't hear you.
Here I am. Okay, I really thank you for the opportunity to to speak before you tonight. Uh, I have before, and I'll probably reiterate some of the things that I've said before. I have fifty years' experience in this field, in the fire field. And dispatch. I served eleven years as a dispatcher in this town. And I feel that I'm. Fairly qualified to speak on this matter. The. There's been a lot of talk about. What had, and I'm enthused that you have to look at what's gonna happen at the station, it's very, very. Revealing that we just heard that. Regular business calls and everything else will still go, still go to the local station and not to. Not to the regional dispatch. This grant, if you decide to go this way. They cover the first three years of your expenses. And then, and then you have to pay your assessment. We have to really look. At what we're doing now. I gotta respectfully disagree with the fire chief. We have existing problems, I know I've worked there, we have existing problems. But I feel that they can be best addressed. As I said before. With an investment in another dispatcher. So that you have two, because one is entirely. It's not safe. One dispatcher cannot handle. An emergency medical call. Dispatch the apparatus for the fire. Give advice, which he has to give by law. On the nine one one system with advising the people that are on the other end of the line on what they should be doing. For instance, if they have to do CPR, he's got to walk them through that. At the same time, he's got a dispatch apparatus, he's got to. Dispatch the police department, he's gonna handle all the communications. In the meantime, he can get another call. And that's when I know from working eleven years there. I had times when I was literally scared stiff. But at that time, before you got the new dispatch center. You had police officers, usually one of them at least in the beginning. That was in the station. Many a time Sergeant DeLuca, we would get a nine one one call. And he'd be looking over your shoulder. And he'd start his, his police department. On the way while you were getting the information. Uh, they don't have that anymore, there's only the poor old one dispatcher in the station. I know the fire chief has problems with his fire, the dispatch. Chelsea, you can say that you've heard bad tapes. I don't think you'll avoid that entirely. In a regional dispatch, because there'll be personnel. That make mistakes, no matter where they are. Okay? The prime way to help, help with that is to have two people in there, that, that is essential. The other problem. If the fire chief has a problem. With the dispatcher or the police chief having a problem. That really, in my opinion, should. Be a separate. Department, a communications, a communications director. Or whatnot, that those problems. Go to him or her. And they work it out. The fire chief and the police chief have enough to do. Running their departments without having to worry about a third entity. And you gotta remember the dispatch is primary, the primary. Point of contact for. The public. Whatever they do first. Influences the whole operation. If they go bad. The operation goes bad, it starts off on the wrong foot. So it's important. Number one here, I believe it's essential that they have two dispatches. If you think you're gonna save money with a regional dispatch, you're not gonna save it, because you've got to make changes. At, at the headquarters, you, you've got to continue. Providing entry service there, from what I just heard. The. Existing problems could be addressed locally. And you'll have a better, better control having your local dispatch rather than having a regional. I, your, the board's time is very valuable. I hate to, I hate to see you go through this. And I I'm confident that. It won't be entirely satisfaction to the fire chief or the police chief when they go regional. Uh, I've seen it. Uh, there are successful centers. Primarily, most of them are out in the western part of the state, where it's a far less activity. Less activity than it is here. Uh, and the nine one one system provides equipment. And they provide training. And that's, that, that, that is all comes in into the town. Uh, especially nine one one training. They have to be certified by the nine one one, and that's all provided, so. Uh, I I just, I just hate to see the town. Get involved with this and five years down the road or three years down the road. Have to go back and. Start reoperating a local, you've got a, you've got a good dispatch center. Uh, facility wise. I know some of the Grafton, for instance, he. He says he's gonna replace his radio system, we just, we just replaced our radio system, it was all digital. It's all. All the questions that come into play. I just, I hate to see you recommend this and. And my, my vote would be to. Not proceed, thank you.
Mr. Thorburn, before you leave, stay for a second, um. We respect everything you said, we respect your background and your experience in this, and. Definitely have listened to you all along, you've been very helpful as far as weighing in as we start discussing this. But let me give you a hypothetical. Um, and I'm making these numbers up, I don't know what the numbers are, let's say that ninety-seven percent of the calls we get today are. Appropriately and easily handled with one dispatcher, and it's that three percent that. Need more help. What if one percent of that three percent needs more than two? Needs three or more, because it's so complex, so there's so much coming in at once, which you would have at the regional center, which we wouldn't have. If we did what your suggestion, which is double what we have, aren't there some calls that even need more than two?
Uh, when, uh. When the stuff hits the fan. It's usually, everybody's involved, one of the things that I heard here was. Mutual aid, fire mutual aid right now is very well organized, works fine with individuals. centers. It's, uh, it all goes through the district, which happens, our district happens to be in Ashland. All, all we have to do when we have a fire is notify Ashland, and they take care of the dispatch above and beyond our, our first alarm. It doesn't have to involve our dispatches, all they have to do is make that call, the dispatcher tell them. But by and large, when you have major emergencies, everybody is involved, everybody. Each individual town, uh, you know, I was just listening, uh, night before last, uh, Michigan, Michigan State incident there, and they had, uh, they had it very well covered with individual, individual, uh, dispatch centers. Does that answer it, Kathy?
Yes, um, anybody having any questions for Mr. Thorburn before? Second, so thank you, Mr. Thorburn, for your thoughts, they are well appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
So Vanessa, can you bring over, um, Patty Fiori?
Hi.
Hi.
I have, um, four, which, questions, which could be pretty quick. I agree this is moving really fast. Could you confirm that this is not a decision that needs to go to town meeting to regionalize the dispatch?
Yes, we, we can confirm, it does not need to go to town meeting.
And in regard to the presentation of cost savings, how does the ambulance fund fit into that? Um, the money that the town currently garners from the ambulance fund, where would that? Would we still be getting that? And also in regard to the cost savings, as the previous speaker was saying, if we still have to cover a dark station twenty-four seven, is there really a staffing cost, cost savings? And my last question is, would the, the committee, the regional committee, consider other sites? If that in itself proves the stumbling block to Southborough?
Can you repeat the last one, um, there's one word I didn't understand you said, what was the first?
Which question, the one about the, the ambulance fund?
No, last one.
So the last question was, will the regional committee consider other sites? If that in itself proves to be the stumbling block for Southborough taking part in this?
So let me, I'm gonna jump to the ambulance fund one first and explain where that one's coming from. So Ms. Fiori came to the select board office, uh, was last night where Sam and I were. Um, Bonnie Fannip was there too, and so the discussion was as follows. Um, we talked about the revenue for the ambulance fund, um, what it is today, roughly, and then the question came up. When you're operating the ambulance calls out of the regional center, how do we know where the calls will be directed to? Um, for example, um, if the call is from Southborough, do we know that our ambulances are going to be called, is that part of the agreement? Or if someone answered the call, happens to, um, for some reason prefer Westboro ambulances, uh, what's going to prevent them from dispatching a Westboro ambulance to come to Southborough? Or if you've got a call that is someplace else, and for some reason, we're going to handle those, who's going to determine? What of the three towns gets called, I never even thought about that till they got, they got brought up last night, I don't have an answer, but that's where this question is coming from.
Thank you for that concise explanation, I was trying to make it very simple and less.
All right, so I, I, I've explained the question, but I don't have the answer, anyone want to take that one?
So Chief Achilles has his hand raised, and I would defer to him first, otherwise I can.
Okay, so can we bring over the chief?
Yes.
And why is coming over, um, the question on the cost of the solution to the dark station, whatever that is, should be factored in, so by June first, we should have that factored into our economic analysis of this, it's, it's, you know, whenever we decide, we need to put that in as far as it costs goes, so we really do understand the full financial picture here, so I think that one's, um, fairly easy to do, hey, chief?
Hey, good evening, everybody. As far as the question that, uh, you raised, and Ms. Fiori raised, it wouldn't be allowed that you'd be dispatching units, not in your jurisdiction, to another jurisdiction. We have defined errors of responsibility. There would be no crossover or preference. Uh, so I can assure you that any ambulance or fire call or police call in town Southborough would be directed to our units, as would Westboro do for Westboro and Craft.
Would that be unless there's a, a, a crisis kind of thing, I mean, I could imagine an event that would require more ambulances than we have, right?
No, I understand that, saying, um, for the primary call, that would be ours, and then any other unit that we would request now would still go through the regional dispatch, so we determine our run cards, uh, not the district, not the regional dispatch. So if we want enough, we have defined run cards for ambulances and fire trucks, the district would have to follow our policies.
So we would expect no difference in ambulance fund revenues, uh,
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
That, that's the bottom line question, Sam, is that answer, so, okay, so that's that one. Um, so chief, you're welcome to stay, um, so Patty's last question, um, was whether the site, um, if we decided on a different site, um, what does that mean, um, so right now, Patty, there's no, I don't think any of the three towns are planning on looking at a different site, I think that the decision to use, um, the site that has been selected is, is done deal. Um, but I do hope that before June first, we, that every, the select board agrees to bring someone in to assure us beyond any reasonable doubt that this site will be safe for people to work long hours on, um, short term and long term. And if that's the case, then I don't know why we would be looking at another site. If that's not the case, I, if they come in and say this is a problem, and everybody, um, concurs, then I would think that, um, that would be a problem, but I, I'm just one person, as far as trying to answer the question, anybody else want to weigh in on that one?
Kathy, um, if I may, and earlier you had spoken about an independent, non-involved party determining the site being safe. Wouldn't that have been already the EPA and Department Environmental Services? Uh, I don't think they would allow, and maybe I'm wrong, and, um, I talked to Melissa a little bit also, but I would think that they would not allow this occupancy if it wasn't safe. And I think, wouldn't that be correct?
Common sense, um, Chief Achilles says that, I just, after what I've read, I just want to be absolutely sure, um, about this, and when I read that there's certain types of facilities and businesses that are not allowed to, to use it, I don't understand why certain people can be there and certain people can't be there, so I still would dislike, um, I, um, I know that people at the, um, the, in the government agencies, um, know what they're talking about, but I'd still like one chance, because we really didn't talk about this very much, as far as how dirty the site would be, this has come up fairly late um, in this process, so I would like for, you know, another chance for someone to come in, um, and totally assure us that this site is safe to put human beings on for long hours.
So just be clear that you're, you're thinking, and maybe I don't, I misunderstand, but at this point, you don't, uh, concur or, uh, with the EPA and DES?
I didn't say that either, I'm, I'm definitely not. No, I'm just, I just, it's called a triple check, um, quadruple check, I just want to hear from one more, more person um, that can, that knows this area, um, and is truly lives this, you know, all day long, that says, oh, you guys are going to be fine, there's nothing to worry about.
Okay.
Okay. Patty, did we answer all your questions?
Um, yes, I think so, I hope you consider this, um, seriously, and the timeline that's involved of assets moving forward, but I think you.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't see anybody else with a hand up. I'm surprised. Okay, all right, so, um, anybody else want to say anything before we actually vote on approving the IMA with the proposed changes that have been put on the table by Andrew and Sam tonight? Chelsea, walk us through what you're going to do as far as these changes go, to get them done in a timely fashion, so this could be signed before March second.
So, um, the boards, last night, Grafton and Westboro's motion um, allowed their chairs to make, um, small changes that I would, I would cat, categorize these as. Um, so we will, Mark and I will circle back with the um, other two towns and their chairs to, um, get those updated, and assuming that there's no issues, then I think we would not need to meet again before, um, we sign it. There were no, uh, so I'd all say that the two towns did not have any changes last night.
So is everybody happy with that proposed process, which is Chelsea takes these final set of changes back, um, makes the changes on the draft IMA, gets them to Westboro and Grafton? To the select board chairs of each, making sure they're okay with those, and then, um, comes back to us and says, we're done, as far as it goes, and we're ready to sign?
Not quite happy, but satisfied.
Do you want to see it before I send it?
Nope, nope.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I still have a number of questions I want answered, so I'm ready to sign, but, uh, ready to consider looking at things before June first.
Because the vote tonight is, I think we're done, uh, we're saying we're ready to sign, um, when the final document is ready to sign before March second. So who are the signatories, Chelsea?
Um, all of us.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. Yep.
Okay, so Chelsea, I think you deserve to make this motion after all the work you've done.
Okay. Um, and just one question, so the motion actually has to authorize the chair to execute said agreement, do you want me to say vice chair, or do you want to do chair? It's like, the other towns all had their chairs, and we had our vice chair.
I thought you just said all of us are signing it.
We are, this, I mean, I guess it, I just didn't change the language from what they did last night, and it's kind of a mute point, because they didn't have any changes to the agreement, but they, their motion included the opportunity for their chair to bless any changes that we had, so I was just going to keep the same motion. Okay, now I'm just gonna have chair, so it, I don't think it impacts you at all, I just want you to know that you're in motion.
Well, I don't think we're going to make any more changes, I think we're done tonight, as long as, as long as they agree with these changes, right?
Right.
Okay.
I just, okay, so just, I just didn't want you to be surprised when you heard chair was in there.
Okay, I'm not surprised.
Okay, all right, so I move the town except the provisions of sections eighteen O to eighteen B inclusive, inclusive of chapter six A of the general laws, providing for the establishment of a regional nine one one communication district, together with the towns of Grafton and Westboro, and the construction or or citing administration, operation and maintenance of a regional nine one one emergency communication center by the district, under the provisions of the proposed district agreement filed with the select board, and to execute and to authorize the chair to execute said agreement with any non-substantive substantive changes made prior to the submission of the grant application.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Lisa.
Hi.
Andrew.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Chelsea.
Aye.
You cook is nay, so four, one, zero. Okay, this is a big deal, um, so that is it for the night, um, so, um, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, Lisa.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Chelsea.
Aye.
Cook is aye, so good night, everyone, see you on the twenty-eighth.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, night, Mark, night, Vanessa. Good night, chief.